I would like to call the meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of April 19, 2016. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Here.
Councilmember O’Rourke.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. First item on our agenda this evening will be the Library Volunteer of the Month and Councilmember Zuniga will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This month we are honoring volunteer Marty Fast. The Santa Maria Public Library is pleased to honor Marty Fast as April’s Volunteer of the Month. Ms. Fast has served on the Library Art Advisory Committee since 2010. The special committee is responsible for the jurying, selection, and scheduling of exhibitions to be displayed within the Library Shepherd Hall Art Gallery. Ms. Fast has brought invaluable expertise, wisdom, and a keen artistic eye to the committee’s work. Ms. Fast is well-known throughout the community for her continual contributions to the arts. In addition to the Library’s Arts Advisory Committee, she voluntarily serves on several other committees and boards. For 21 years, she has served as co-chair of the Individual Grants in the Arts Program for the Santa Barbara Arts Council. Ms. Fast is also the council’s co-chair of the Lester B. Hayes Project and Performance Grants, in which the 2014 individual grants were awarded in her honor. Additionally, she is the Arts Gallery Director for Allen Hancock Colleges and Foxworthy Gallery, as well as a fine arts instructor there. She curates designs and installs the student and faculty exhibits, along with shows by regionally-known artists. The continual devotion and dedication that Ms. Fast has given to promoting the arts in our community is not only commendable, but it has earned her a great deal of respect and admiration amongst her students and peers. She continues to be an inspiration to many. The Santa Maria Library is both thankful and honored to have Ms. Fast volunteer her time and efforts as a member of the Art Advisory Committee, as is the City Council.
You trying to come up? Yes.
I’d like to say how wonderful—I had no idea there’d be such a crowd. This is great.
It’s all for you.
This is wonderful. The arts are so important, and I’m so delighted to be part of the Art in the Library program. And I want to tell you, you have the best person in Sarah Voss. She is just amazing. She’s done a beautiful job spearheading, and I’m delighted to be part of bringing art into this part of Santa Maria. Thank you for all you do and for your awareness of the arts in the community, and I really appreciate this award. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Marty.
Mary, did you want to make any comments?
Oh, just maybe a couple.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Patino and councilmembers. I’m sure you all know Marty. We’re so lucky to have her help us with our Library Art Committee, and we hope she’ll continue doing it for many more years. So, thank you again, Marty.
Mary, thank you.
Thank you. And Marty—oh. I would just like to comment, Marty, you and your dad are synonymous with art and culture in our community, and maybe people don’t come up and tell you all the time, but we certainly appreciate all that you have done. Thank you.
Absolutely.
The next item this evening is a commendation for Retiring Block Grants Advisory Committee Member Bob Litzinger, and Councilmember Boyson will be making that presentation.
Excuse me, Mr. Boyson. Before you go, I just want to let the people in the back know that there’s two seats up front, so you guys don’t have to be standing back there. There’s two available seats.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this is in the form of a resolution by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, commending Robert Litzinger on his retirement as a member of the Block Grants Advisory Committee—and I might say retirement of the Block Grants Advisory Committee, but promotion to the Parks and Recreation Commission as well. So whereas on January 16, 1996, the City Council approved the formation of the Block Grants Advisory Committee as a formal standing committee, operating under the Brown Act, with each council member making individual appointments. And whereas the duties of the Block Grants Advisory Committee include assessing the community needs, conducting public workshops and hearings, reviewing applications for funding, and making recommendations to the City Council for the allocation of housing and community development grant funds. And whereas Robert Litzinger served with the highest degree of integrity as a dedicated member of the Block Grants Advisory Committee for three terms, totaling over nine years, and during his tenure participated in hundreds of hours of meetings, site visits, deliberations, presentations, and study sessions. And whereas his philanthropic attitude and civic commitment has strengthened the committee, enriched the city’s public participation process, and greatly benefited Santa Maria and its residents. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria as follows: Rob Litzinger is hereby commended for his many years of dedicated service to the Santa Maria community, and wish the best in his endeavors. And I would put that forth as a motion.
I’ll second that.
Okay, there’s a motion for Resolution 2016-33, and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember O’Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Motion carried.
And I know that Rob is here.
Come on down. Hell, he’s back there.
Well, I’d just like to say the city staff is awesome to work for. We had a great time, and always so helpful and knowledgeable, so great job, guys. It was fun to work together these nine years. And for the nonprofit and executive directors that are here tonight, man, I just so appreciate what you guys do, and hopefully we can keep in touch outside of this, and I just want to say it’s been a great honor. But I would like to say to everybody that are watching here tonight, volunteer somewhere because you’ll always get more than you give you’ll get back. And so I have over 700 volunteers working for my organization, and it’s the number one way we see people mature and grow, get out of crime, get out of depression, all of those type of things. So everyone, volunteer somewhere. You won’t regret it.
Thank you. Rob, we ought to do a commercial, see if you can go on TV with that. That was great.
I’m telling you, that’s the best there is. We do need to get that down. We need to get Alan Sutterfield on that one, yes.
Next, we have a proclamation, and Councilmember O’Rourke will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and speaking of volunteers, I see a boatload of them sitting out there. Gives me a great pleasure. This is the City of Santa Maria, Santa Maria, California proclamation. Whereas organ tissue, marrow, and blood donations are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, and on average, 22 people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the needs of California, at any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors. And whereas a single individual’s donation of a heart, lung, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestines can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 50 others. And whereas millions of each—millions of lives each year are served and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood, and the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age. And whereas the Santa Maria residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Registry when applying for or renewing their driver’s license or ID cards at the Department of Motor Vehicles. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes April 2016 as Donate Life Month in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages everyone to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver’s license or ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, In witness thereof, she has set her hand and has caused the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed this 19th day of April 2016. That’s all you have to do, is check the little thing, and you get the little doodad on there, and voila. Now, being an older gentleman, unfortunately, some of my parts they’ll never use, but some of you young folks, they need it, so it’s really easy to do. I would encourage you. And accepting this proclamation is—oh, I have it upside down—Joe Darga. Thank you. My name is Joe Darga, and I’m an ambassador of One Legacy. And I first want to thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, for this proclamation, for recognizing the importance of Donate Life, how organ donation, organ and tissue donation can save lives. I do this—I’m a volunteer for this organization because I have been touched by donation. I’m a recipient, an organ recipient. I’m alive today because of this program, because somebody, a stranger, said yes. Somebody said yes, and I got to live. I have a heart, a heart of another man. It’s been 13-plus years, and it beat 14 in June. The most wonderful thing that has ever happened to me in my entire life. And I had a good life. I was married for the same woman for 50 years, three kids, five good kids, all those wonderful things, wonderful weddings and anniversaries that celebrated. Wonderful days, wonderful times, but nothing, nothing compares to somebody saying, “Here, take my heart. I want you to live.” And that’s what somebody did for me, and that’s what this program is all about. It’s saving lives, making other—giving other people a chance to live. I’ve got an extra 13-plus years so far. I’m hoping for maybe 10 more, possibly. That’d be cool. I was 68-years-old when I got this heart.
Wow.
I’m 82, and it’s just awesome because of this program and what people do, and what a wonderful program we have in this country of ours that can do things like this, can save lives. And what it requires, simply what it requires is more people, more people saying yes and getting that little pink dot on their driver’s license. If we could do that, we could save more lives. I’m just one of thousands of people, and it’s been beautiful. And, gosh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for this honor.
Thank you very much. See, Mr. O’Rourke, you can be—you can live after, after.
I get—that’s me getting parts, not giving parts. Give a little, take a little, whatever.
Next, we have another proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is to Zodiac Aerospace. Whereas, following four years of severe drought in California, Governor Brown called upon water users across the state to be vigilant in ongoing water conservation efforts. And whereas, water is one of the City of Santa Maria’s most precious natural resources and a vital part of the local economy and environment. And whereas Zodiac Aerospace removed nearly one acre of turf in front of its facility on Skyway Drive and replaced it with drought-tolerant landscaping. And whereas, it is estimated that the change has reduced Zodiac Aerospace’s potable water use by four acre-feet per year. And whereas Zodiac Aerospace connected to the City of Santa Maria Secondary Water Irrigation System at its facility on Airport Drive, and thereby reduced demand on the community’s potable water supply. And whereas, it is estimated that Zodiac Aerospace will save 12 acre-feet of potable water per year by using untreated well water from the secondary water irrigation system to water this landscape. And whereas, the water conservation efforts of Zodiac Aerospace have demonstrated the ability to dramatically reduce domestic potable water usage while still maintaining the beauty and viability of the landscape. Whereas Zodiac Aerospace’s reduction in potable water demand is an exemplary effort in the wise use of water resources and community partnership. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognized and commends Zodiac Aerospace for responsible stewardship of water conservation in the City of Santa Maria. And here to accept this proclamation is Tony Guy from Zodiac.
This is so awesome. So thank you, Mayor Patino, city councilmembers, city leaders, and Santa Maria community members. We don’t know what to say. It’s an honor to be recognized by the city for efforts that we’ve done to not only beautify the landscaping of our property, but we took this as an opportunity to reduce our water usage. We would also like to thank Dr. Bob Ibsen and his family and his staff because they’re the landlords of this specific property, and they’ve been very good to work with over the years. Also, I asked All Weather Landscaping to be here as well because All Weather, Terry Lee, put together a landscaping plan for us. He helped us select the plants, he helped us reduce our water consumption, he helped us at this time to not only beautify the property, but to also take water conservation efforts into mind, so we say thank you to them as well. So again, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And if any of you haven’t driven by there to see the beautiful landscaping—it probably takes about three trips because people go pretty fast there, so take the slow lane and enjoy the beautiful landscape. And thank you very much, Mr. Guy. Now that we’ve finished with one water conservation item, I will ask Mr. Springer, our Utilities Director, to provide us with an update on the city’s overall conservation efforts so far.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I’d just like to point out that it’s due to efforts like the leadership of Mr. Guy and Zodiac Aerospace that the City of Santa Maria continues to meet its conservation requirements as imposed by the state of California. So I’m happy to report with the super-complicated chart this evening that if you look at the bar chart in March, you can see that the blue bar is significantly higher than red bar, indicating that our conservation efforts in March exceeded our requirements, and that the important thing is the black trend line stays above the yellow trend line. That is the cumulative requirement by the state, and that is what they measure us by, and those requirements have been extended out to October. So beyond the super-complicated chart, here’s the easy answer. First of all, the water drop is still smiling or smirking, so it’s happy. And the good news is, you can see there in March, our conservation efforts—I’d like to remind us that we have a 16 percent requirement by the state. The community was able to achieve 22 percent in March, so our cumulative actually brings us above the line for March, so we’re in good shape there. However, as we head into the end of our rainy season, as you know, on the central coast, it’s very rare to see rain much beyond here, although I think there’s a 50/50 chance on Friday. So I will remind people, if it continues to rain on Friday, be sure to turn your sprinklers on. But we’ve only seen about 8.9 inches of rainfall this year. We’re at 72 percent of normal. So despite all the talk of El Nino and the concern of significant rains and flooding, we’re still below an average year, so we’re essentially in a dry year, and the reservoirs that provide water supply in the area—you can see there—are well below normal, at less than 15 percent, and Twitchell is more or less empty. So that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Springer. The next item on our agenda this evening is public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not on the agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. Madam Mayor, we have 14.
14? Okay. Okay, and these are not on any agenda items. Mr. Peter Flores, followed by Linda Greco, followed by Tony Balam. Good evening, Mr. Flores.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, councilmembers. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I just wanted to formally introduce to you the One Community Action Coalition that has come together since September of 2015. It’s a group of individuals and organizations that really want to look at what transpired within our community, particularly with the youth violence. And I want to say thank you to all of you that have participated in our meetings. We meet once a month, normally the last week in the month. Our next meeting will be April 27 at the Menami Center, from 6:30 to 8:00. And we would invite everybody here to come out and join our meeting. We have really a wonderful group of people that really show that we care about our city and our community. It’s from all different components, all different stakeholders, law enforcement, juvenile justice, the schools are there, parents, students, community members, all the different agencies are represented. And this next meeting is going to be particularly important because we’ve collected so many different ideas and programs, and we want to focus on three focus areas: community building, education, and the resources that are available to all our families and our youth. And so, thank you for giving me that opportunity. I would hope that you could join us in our work, and please consider us and think about our coalition because we’re not going away anytime soon, and we’re here to stay, and we love our city and our community, and we’re going to do everything that we can to bring it back to prominence. Not that it’s no longer prominent, but we want to get through this small crisis that we’ve been faced with, and we’re going to show everybody how to do it right. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Linda Greco, followed by Tony Balam, followed by Robert Walling.
Mayor Patino and city councilmembers, my name is Linda Greco. I’m the president of the Santa Barbara County Animal Care Foundation. The City of Santa Maria is saturated with unwanted animals. Indiscriminate breeding continues, there are not enough homes, animals are running in the streets in pockets of downtown Santa Maria, and the stray side of the shelter continues to be full. This visual saturation can be seen in the animal services statistics from the 2013-2014 fiscal year. The Santa Maria shelter took in almost 1,500 stray dogs. Only 36 percent were redeemed, and a lot of work went into transferring 26 percent to rescues or out of the area, and 24 percent through adoption. The remaining 11 percent were euthanized. In comparison to the community of Santa Barbara, which is similar in size, the South County shelter took in about 650 strays. 70 percent were responsibly redeemed by their owners, 27 percent adopted to new homes, leaving 7 percent transferred to rescues and 3 percent euthanized. So what do we do? Adopt a county responsible pet owner ordinance. We currently are the only city in Santa Barbara County who have not adopted an ordinance or something similar to the county’s ordinance. The county’s responsible pet owner ordinance is not a mandatory ordinance, and that’s very, very important. It is written to encourage responsible pet ownership and respect the choice of a responsible pet owner. It recognizes that a responsible owner takes their pet to the vet. If a dog owner chooses not to alter their pet, all they have to do is visit their vet, discuss their intent to keep their animal intact, and request a veterinary certificate. So then why is this ordinance important? It touches the people who are misinformed, on the fence about altering their dog, never really thought about it, or would like to but think they can’t afford it. These are the dogs that are getting out and causing the problem. People are given a choice. The ordinance acts as a tool for the community to act responsibly by raising awareness, promoting education and dialogue, decreasing pet nuisance issues in our community, encouraging a safer community, and welcoming in additional supportive resources. It is currently as if a faucet is turned on full blast in our community, and overflow is the unwanted animals. Local animal nonprofits such as our own and animal services have been trying our best to deal with this and the overflow, but it requires a lot of extensive resources. This burden can be lessened if the citizens within the City of Santa Maria were turned down the flow of number of unwanted litters by spay and neutering, and it would make a huge impact. We talked earlier about the fact of saving lives. This would be something that if we could stop the flow before it was here, we could cut down the number of euthanases, plus the work that goes into all of us trying to get animals out of our community because there’s not enough homes in our community. So I’d like to ask you to consider adopting a responsible spay-neuter ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Balam, followed by Robert Walling, followed by Mary Clark.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and councilmembers. My name is Tony Balam, and I’m here to encourage the City of Santa Maria to place the Responsible Pet Ownership Ordinance on the agenda, and urge you to move forward and adopt the ordinance. We all know that not everyone in Santa Maria owns a pet, and may be asking, “Why is this even my problem?” The answer to that question is easy. All of us are affected in one way or another by animal overpopulation. Millions of tax dollars are spent annually to shelter and care for stray, abandoned, injured, and unwanted pets. Human health is threatened by the danger of animal bites, attacks, and transmittable diseases, including rabies. Property may be damaged, and livestock or pets can be killed when these animals roam in search of food. Animal waste is proving to be a serious environmental hazard in our yards and public parks. It is only when all of us assume responsibility for pet overpopulation by adopting an ordinance to help control it that we will see any decrease to the problem. And yes, this is a problem in Santa Maria. Once the RPO ordinance is put into place, we will have more opportunities to educate the public on what it takes to be a responsible pet owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Walling, followed by Mary Clark, followed by Libby Walling.
Good evening. My name is Robert Walling, and I’m actually here reading a letter on behalf of Gretchen Leif. Dear Madam Mayor and members of the Santa Maria City Council, my husband and I live part-time at Alamo Creek Ranch, a 2,300-acre property along Highway 166 northwest of Santa Maria. We grow grapes there and allow our neighbors to run cattle. We have been good citizens of the community for years. I am delighted to be able to address this meeting this evening in the form of this letter. In particular, it is the opportunity we have before us tonight to examine the issue of spay-neuter in Santa Maria and the city’s record to date. As the founder and president of Davy’s Voice, I want to share the fact that our mission is to make Santa Barbara County the most animal-responsible county in California. We urge Santa Maria to adopt a spay-neuter ordinance and to look forward to working to change policies resulting in a more reasonable and responsible environment for the animals to reside here. Thank you very much, Gretchen Leif. Thank you, council. I do want to ask those who are in support of this here tonight, if they would stand up, please, to show how many—does that mean you’re here tonight? Thank you. And one last thing, I want to commend the city for adopting the Donate Life Month for the month of April. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Clark, followed by Libby Walling, followed by Dan Petrie.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. My name is Mary Clark. I am here on behalf of Voices for the Voiceless, an advocate for the Responsible Pet Owners Ordinance. Tonight, I'm here to outline briefly the health benefits of spaying and neutering your pets, and why it is important to do so from a pet health perspective. Both procedures drastically remove the animal's urge to roam, which can result in further mating, lost pets, injured pets, and sometimes death to the animal. In female dogs and cats, spaying can drastically reduce the occurrence of mammary tumors, which a high percentage of those result in malignancy. Uterine cancers in female dogs and cats is also reduced. Repeated birth cycles of unwanted litters decreases the animal's lifespan, in addition to creating an influx of puppies and kittens that often end up in an already overcrowded shelter situation. A male dog or cat will actively seek out a female in heat. For male pets, neutering reduces their urge to mark territories. They are less likely to roam, which would reduce the risk of being involved in fights or car accidents. A dog who roams away from his home or yard is more likely to develop diseases transmitted from other animals. The risk of testicular cancers is eliminated, and the risk of prostate diseases is decreased. Although testicular tumors have a small rate of malignancy in unaltered dogs, it can result, if untreated, hormonal imbalances that can be fatal. To conclude, I would like to stress the importance of giving information to the public on all aspects of the benefits of spaying and neutering. The more people know about the resources available to help with this in their community, the more likely they are to become responsible pet owners, which not only benefits their pets, but their community as well. A pet is a lifelong commitment, and their good health is vital to eliminating the volume of unwanted kittens and puppies. There are not enough homes for them all. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Libby Walling, followed by Dan Petrie, followed by Brian Zell.
Mayor Patino and city council members, first, I'd like to say thank you for proclaiming April as Donate Life Month in Santa Maria. As a recipient and a donor family, it really means a lot to me, so I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Anyway, I am here to speak in favor of the city of Santa Maria adopting the non-mandatory Responsible Pet Ownership Ordinance. A big part of the RPO ordinance is the importance of altering one's pet. Spaying and neutering is not only healthier and safer for our pets, but it is better for the people who own them and care for them as well. When an animal is altered, they are less prone to have severe health issues, which can become a financial burden for their owners, especially if they are unable to afford to take their pet in for regular vet visits and vaccinations. Animals that are altered are less likely to roam or bark, and altering an animal makes them less aggressive and less prone to biting. Animals, especially dogs, that roam free are quickly becoming a nuisance in Santa Maria. They can cause safety issues in parks, near schools, and in traffic when they are free to roam. Most of the animals that run loose in the city are unaltered with no identification such as a tag or microchip, which I'm sure also means that they are not vaccinated. These animals either end up at the shelter, are killed in traffic, or become a meal for wild animals that have come into the city in search of food. Although this ordinance is not mandatory, it would offer animal services and animal welfare groups the opportunity to educate pet owners and encourage them to be responsible. There are a number of resources available in the city of Santa Maria for pet owners to receive low-to-no-cost vaccinations, medical exams, and spay or neuter services. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to express our concerns. We hope to see Santa Maria approve this ordinance and complete the list of cities in Santa Barbara County that have adopted the Responsible Pet Ownership.
Thank you. Dan Petrie, followed by Brian Zell, followed by Michelle Kelly.
My name is Dan Petrie, and I live in Vandenberg Village, California. And if I was a citizen of Santa Maria, I would have voted for you, Mayor Patino.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm actually here on a very serious subject, actually. My name is Dan Petrie, as I said. And ladies and gentlemen of the Santa Maria City Council, I'm here to support public access TV for the 40 hours per week that it used to be open for production, editing, doing live TV shows. As you well know, your council reduced the public hours from 40 to 11 hours beginning January 2015 while keeping it open for all government and educational use most of the 40-hour week. The same staff are there 32 hours a week and do outside jobs for different cities, but keep it closed for public. I do have a local TV show, by the way. This is a violation of the terms of the PEG. And furthermore, since most of the public TV shows bring their own volunteers at no cost to the city, while city uses the two staff members for their productions of educational and government, this is wrong. Peg facilities are to be open equally for all, not just government. Please order the change and open it up to at least 32 hours a week for public. 11 hours for a dozen TV shows is just not sufficient. And thank you.
Thank you. Brian Zell, followed by Michelle Kelly, followed by William Wagner.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. I basically have the same thing to reiterate here regarding 40 hours a week being reduced to 11 hours per week. So I'll go ahead and read the same statement. It should be used for production, editing, and doing live TV shows. It began January 2015. It was kept open for government and educational, which is understandable, but that's used most of the 40 hours a week. The same staff there, 32 hours a week, and do outside jobs for different cities, but keep it closed for the public. It is in violation of the terms of the PEG. And on a side note, I don't think that's what this was intended for initially. Furthermore, since most public TV shows bring their own volunteers at no cost to the city, while city uses the two staff members for productions of educational or government, is wrong. PEG facilities are to be open equally for all, not just government. It was supposed to be for the public. So our motion here is to please order the change and open it up to at least 32 hours a week for the public. The 11 hours is not sufficient.
Thank you, Mr. Zell. Michelle Kelly, followed by William Wagner, followed by Judith Monte.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Patino. Ladies and gentlemen of the Santa Maria City Councils, I'm here to support a public access TV for the 40 hours per week that is used to open for productions and editing and doing live TV shows. As you all know, city council reduces the public hours from 40 to 11 hours beginning January 2015 while keeping it open for government and educational use most of 40 hours a week. The staff are there 32 hours a week and do outside jobs for different cities, but keep it closed for the public. This is a violation of the terms of PEG. And furthermore, since most of the public TV shows bring their own volunteers at no cost to the city, while city uses the two staff members for their productions of educational or government, this is wrong. Peg facilities are to be open equally for all, not just government. Please order the change and open it up at least 32 hours a week for public. 11 hours for a dozen TV shows to produce is insufficient. Thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. William Wagner, followed by Judith Monte, followed by Susan Friesen.
Good evening, gentleladies and gentlemen of the city council and Mayor Patino. The city of Santa Maria has indeed reduced the hours for public access. This is the Cracker Barrel for Santa Maria. Hundred years ago, Santa Maria was very small. Everybody'd get to the general store and sit down, and the farmers would come in and talk about the crop prices and the weather, and pretty much everybody knew what everybody knew. But the city's now over 100,000 people, and that doesn't count Orca. We need a place where those unelected voices, those people that were defeated in elections, those people who are, say, Latino, have no seat on the city council. Yet this city is at least 35% Latino, and there's not one on that -- I know you claim to be Latino, Mayor Patino, but they're not represented.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Wagner. My maiden name is Ramirez, so I am Latino.
I know that, Miss Wagner. But you don't count. Forty hours a week we were open until I did a show on illegal bank foreclosures by banks, and then suddenly we were cut down from 40 hours to 11 hours. The dozen people doing the shows can't get production, editing, and many of them don't have the facilities at home to edit, and they need the editing facilities. So even though they produce the show, it's not ready to go on the air. They need those other times. I look at this as you're trying to kill public access, the Cracker Barrel, the place where everybody has a chance to have a voice and be heard. That's how I look at this. I've been doing my show for 16 years, and the reason this city got $1 million as bonus from Comcast to take over public access is because I had just grounds to sue them, and they didn't want that lawsuit. So you took on the responsibility, and I consider this a continuing transgression of what Comcast did under the old regime. I don't mind that you have two facilities, the city council and public access facilities, to do it, but you shouldn't cut us down from 40 to 11 hours. You've had over a year, the theory was you were going to rent it out for $75 an hour for other people to come in and produce. Nobody's going to rent that for 75. We've got antique equipment. None of it is high definition, and you haven't sold a single hour. I don't want to bring that lawsuit that I didn't bring 16 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Judith Monte, followed by Susan Friesen, followed by Randy Farbrother.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I just want to take a very brief minute to make commentary on a public meeting I was able to attend in the last few weeks by Chief Martin during a presentation on the efforts with the MS-13 arrests, and to say, wow. I know you guys have heard a lot of condemnation about what was going on during all these murders, and why isn't our police doing more? You know, Madam Mayor, what are you doing? I was blown away by what was going on behind the scenes that made, for months, that made it possible to do a stealth operation and have a high success rate on the arrests. Chief Martin brought his expertise from years in game police work in LA. He leveraged outside agencies, including the LA crime labs, bringing in resources we didn't have. And I would like to go on public record as thanking you for having the wisdom to hire Chief Martin, and for not just the chief and his leadership, but all of our PD department that worked so hard and so diligently, learned, and grew as they went. And to say, I really believe that Chief Martin has come to our city for such a time as this.
Thank you, Judith. Susan Friesen, followed by Randy Farbrother.
Good evening, Madam Patino and fellow city council members and fellow citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Susan Friesen. I've lived here since 1988, so I'm a longstanding resident of the city. I want to say that I'm so happy that this city council and Madam Mayor had Donate Life approved as a mayoral proclamation two years in a row, and now this third year. I'm a mother of two daughters with heart transplants. And I even see one of my neighbors here, and my daughter, Elena, is in attendance. She's in between two daughters, Siobhan and Lindsay, who had heart transplants 2001 and 2003, and they are doing very well, thank God. Well, all three daughters are in college. And I just want to say that without the life-giving donation of these organs, my daughters wouldn't be here today, and I'd only have three children, most likely. So the oldest daughter, she found out she needed a transplant at Vandenberg Air Force Base, and even the doctor didn't even think it was a correct diagnosis about her heart. She was sent over to Cottage Hospital and then airlifted. I couldn't even, I had to carry her from a clinic a half a block away. They wouldn't even allow her to walk. And she was airlifted from Cottage Hospital to UCLA in the year 2000. And back then, I was even told as a mother I could take her home to die because even getting a transplant didn't guarantee she'd live the first year. Second daughter received her transplant in 2003, and she ended up in the hospital, unable to even get out of her bed very often because she had a blood clot on her left ventricle. Thank God they were able to get the transplants because few children do. When I lived at UCLA, and I say "lived," I literally lived there, many little caskets or little boxes came by with the deceased. So I want to say that the donate community is invaluable, and those that donate tissues, which even include, the tissues even include your bones, tendons, cornea, heart valves, nerves, and veins. So there's more than the organs. I even just received a bone marrow graft, bone graft, from a dental bone graft. So I want to say that I thank you so much, citizens of Santa Maria and our city council and mayor, for taking on this issue because it's vital, it's life, it's survival for many people to get a transplant.
Thank you, Ms. Friesen. Randy Farbrother. Okay, for the last speaker during public comment, oh, I'm sorry. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Randy Farbrother, and I'm in support of the spay-neuter ordinance. I am founder and president of a feral cat organization called Catalyst for Cats. We started in Santa Barbara, and we've been working in Santa Maria for almost two decades. We use the method of trap-neuter and return for feral and stray cats to stop the breeding. We've come across so many people that don't understand the importance of this. It's a lot of ignorance, and people don't care. We've made tremendous strides in the whole county, all the organizations working together. But we can do more, and we need to do more. We need to encourage people to do the right thing, and this ordinance will do that. Please help us make a better community out of Santa Maria. It's the only town that doesn't have this spay-neuter ordinance, and where it is in place, it has helped. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so for the last speaker during public comment, Teri Bright will be making a short presentation on a new community service website. Mr. Bright.
Honorable Mayor and city council, it's a pleasure to be here. I'd like to kind of give you a gift of a website, and the website is called JustServe.org. It's available to anybody. What it is, it's a website where organizations, communities, cities, who need volunteers can post what kind of project they need the volunteers for, and then people in the community, individuals, groups, organizations, can go and sign up on this website to volunteer service at these various organizations. This is a little bit about of what we're talking about. We'll go through this slideshow. We're connecting volunteers with opportunities. It can be any kind of an opportunity. We'll tell you some of them that we're doing here in Santa Maria already. It can be for communities, such as the schools, promoting volunteerism, assist faith-based nonprofit community or government organizations. Last Saturday, for example, Serve Santa Maria with Pastor Nielsen had an incredible turnout. My wife and I wound up at some elderly lady's home doing yard work for her. It was a great experience. And for volunteers, if they have some time with them and their family, or maybe their church group or their work group, they can find projects in the community that they can do service there. Robert Litzinger talked about, just previous coming up here, about volunteering. This is an opportunity for individuals to volunteer. And here are some of the volunteers, homeless shelters. And here are some of the volunteers, homeless shelters, soup kitchens, food banks. Here in Santa Maria, we have the Food Bank, the Homeless Shelter, the Blood Bank, both the Santa Maria Valley Discovery Museum and the Santa Maria Valley Historical Society Museum. And if you're not doing anything next Saturday, there's another project called, it's at the Sway Crossing at the Santa Maria River. It's been posted, it's sponsored by the City of Santa Maria Parks Department and the Police Department, and they're going to be cleaning the levee walkway along the Santa Maria River down at the Sway Creek Crossing. So we invite you to come and join us there. This is our contact information, and now we have just a short video that we'd like to show you. We're hoping it'll get there.
One of the things, we have a lot of questions from the community, faith-based organizations, how to get back, how to get involved. The Just Serve program has basically allowed us to give volunteers a direction.
You know, I'll let you go, Ian. Why can't it pitch your personality or family?
If I could sit down with another council member in another state that we've been looking at this or had talked about it, I think what I would say to them, what I have said to them, is that this is one of those types of programs that will again help your city be a success.
I just love volunteering here, because it kind of takes me out of myself and puts me into the community, and it just makes me feel like I'm making a difference.
That's a website, and just by way of information, there's probably a dozen cities in Santa Maria in California that are using and participating in Just Serve, such as Riverside, La Mesa, San Jose, Santa Clarita, Poway, Dublin, Thousand Oaks, and I could go on with another dozen cities, but I'll stop there. That is my presentation. We encourage the City of Santa Maria to use the Just Serve website, to go on there, learn more about it, and if you have any kind of project that you need volunteers, post it on there, it'll be presented, and then volunteers in the community, wherever they are, can sign up and volunteer for your activity. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? No, but thank you very much. I, you have the CDBG Grants Committee sitting out here, and you've got people that are affiliated with many nonprofits, so I'm sure you'll be getting some calls.
We'd love it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bright.
And we do have some cards to hand out.
Okay.
My wife will hand those out.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, I don't live in the City of Santa Maria, so I didn't vote for you.
You can always move. Before we move on, Mr. Hayden, do you want to make any comments?
Thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the City Council. We heard from, it's like roughly around a half a dozen residents today regarding the non-mandatory Responsible Pet Owners Ordinance. We have been in discussions with Ms. Greco and Ms. Walling. Also, the County of Santa Barbara, the Animal Services Director Jan Klick has been in discussions with the city regarding this issue, so it is on our radar, and I think it's something that I would like to discuss with the City Council in bringing this item back to the Council for discussion. It might even be something the Council may want to direct staff to bring back later this evening under oral reports of the City Council, if you have a consensus on that. With regards to a couple of the speakers tonight that spoke about the public access restrictions, I will have staff look into the requirements and the alleged violations of our PEG agreement. What I will say, though, is that we did have a lapse in our pay contract back in January 2015. At that time, Comcast reduced our funding for PEG operations, basically went to zero. They still provided us the capital portion, so I think that may have had something to do with the reasons why we had to reduce our operating times available to the public. But we will look into both of those issues.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on, I need to note that item 3G, the Enus subdivision item, is being pulled at the request of the developer and will be continued to the May 3 City Council meeting. So having said that, any council members wish to pull for discussion?
I want to pull, please, Mayor, item C.
C? Ms. Waterfield, yeah?
And IED, just recusing.
Okay. Mr. O'Rourke.
And Madam Mayor, I'd like to do B to recuse myself. Abstain, I should say.
Mr. Boyson.
And Madam Mayor, I'll be recusing myself also from item D.
D. Okay, let's do item, okay, that's, so Zuniga, that's item C, is the only one that needs to be discussed. Item C is the agreement with the Santa Maria Chamber of Commerce to administer the Santa Maria Tourism Improvement District. Ms. Zuniga.
Yes, so I just want to say, first of all, how happy I am to see this, you know, coming forward and coming to fruition, and I know that the Hotel Motel Association has worked really diligently with the Chamber to get this going, and excited to see that relationship build, but I do have two questions, Mr. Morris, if you could possibly help me. I'm thrilled to see in the annual reports where you're going to have specific measures and outcomes, because I know that we've talked about that frequently, so I appreciate seeing that in there, and I guess I just would reiterate again that if possible, that those outcomes and measures would be tied into specific efforts, as much as you can do that. So, you know, these many beds were related to this ad placed in this, you know, newspaper or magazine, or whatever that is. I think that would be really helpful in helping us kind of move forward, determine where we're getting the most for our buck, and I know in some instances that may not be, but I just want to keep asking that that be a focus.
I appreciate that, and, you know, while it's difficult sometimes to connect that dot directly between an ad and a sale of a room, as we're building our marketing campaign and we're starting discussions, particularly around our website redesign, we're looking at mechanisms that they can embed into that website that will allow us to measure influence. So, you know, we can survey people that have asked for information through the website and go back and ask them, did you actually visit? How much did the website or the information influence that decision, and at least extrapolate from that kind of data.
Great, yeah.
So it's very much part of what we're exploring.
Nice, thank you. And then if I could just, so on the next, the next item, which is 2.04, is the subcontracts, and I'm just curious about that language, I'm hoping you can help me understand, I'm just going to take a quick second to read it. So it says, "Subcontracts. Chamber shall let and administer all subcontracts necessary for providing the district services, and all subcontracting chambers shall be encouraged to follow competitive bidding procedures, unless chamber has determined that it is necessary desirable to award a subcontractor on a negotiated basis in order to assure the provisions of inadequate services at the most advantageous cost." And so in my head, I'm thinking, well, you get the most advantageous cost by, you know, the bidding process, so I'm just trying to understand that.
Yeah, absolutely, and we're just now in the process of releasing this week an RFP that will look at support in developing a branding program, our website, and then establishing the first year, year and a half worth of marketing programs. So that's going out on a competitive bid this week. There, we, you know, we, I'm sure that there will be times when we're going to need a very specialized expertise, and that would be the time when we might not put it out to a full bid, but anytime that it's possible for us to get multiple quotes, we're certainly going to pursue that, because as you say, it's often the way we find the best deal.
Right. Can you, and I don't want to belabor the subject, I'm sorry, but can you like provide an example of when, like what is specialized? Do you have one on the top of your head? I hate to put you on the spot.
Well, so for instance, this tracking mechanism that we're looking at embedding within the website, that's a fairly new technology, and we're only really aware of one firm in the state that is, that is really doing that well, and so that may be a case where we would just work directly with them, rather than, you know, putting it out and having lots of people tell us we can do it, and they have a track record, so that helps.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate that, that provided the clarity I was looking for, thanks.
My pleasure.
Okay, do I hear any motions here?
Madam Mayor, let me start with the easy one. I'll move for the approval of item B.
Item D, is it?
Item B is in void.
B is in void.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and second to approve item B. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Abstain.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item D.
I'll second.
It's been moved and second to approve...
That's both here.
Yeah.
With the exception of item D.
The consent calendar with the exception of item D.
It'd actually be item D, G, and B.
D, G, and B?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I missed a couple.
No.
No.
We've already approved B. Right, okay.
Yes, okay. Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Is there a balance? Okay, I'll move for approval of the balance of the consent calendar.
Item D.
We did item...
No, that was B.
D.
No, we did B.
With the exception of item D.
Okay.
I'll second.
And C, Q, and Y?
We're now voting on just three D.
Three D, yeah, three D, okay.
The option of item D.
It's been moved and second to approve item D.
I apologize, Madam Mayor, I didn't hear who gave the second.
Ms. Zuniga.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Abstain.
Councilmember Boyson?
Abstain.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay. That was a rarity.
So... The next order of business is a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation by the Santa Barbara County Fifth District Supervisor Steve Lavigno regarding the Summer Youth Employment Program.
I thought maybe you'd fallen asleep back there, Mr. Lavigno. Thank you for being here this evening.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here, and it was really interesting to see all the wonderful things that you guys get to deal with. It was a change, a lot more positive in this atmosphere than it's currently, I think.
Well, after you finish with your presentation, you are, have been, if you'd love to stay, we'd love to have you.
That'd be great, but unfortunately, I won't be able to take you up on that offer. But what I wanted to start with before we get into the Summer Youth Program is, I did want to thank you, Mayor Patino, and the council members, also City Manager Rick Hayden and Chief of Police Ralph Martin, for attending our budget workshops and advocating for the continued service at the Santa Maria Foster Jail. That's critical to the public safety for the people of the City of Santa Maria. So I know I sat just for an hour, you guys, I think, put in three or four hours in that meeting, so I do appreciate it. And also, it's the first time I've been here since Operation Matador, and I do want to congratulate the chief and all the members of Santa Maria P.D. for their professionalism and great work, and I do want to just reiterate, as you know, that the county is a willing partner with probation and the Sheriff's Department, and now with the District Attorney's Office, taking care of the rest of what needs to be dealt with there. But I'm here tonight to highlight a program that could be instrumental in maybe staving off some of the future problems that we have by keeping our young people busy this summer doing something productive, and that's working. So the Santa Barbara County Connect to Careers Summer Youth Program is an attempt to provide qualified youth with paid work experience and life-changing mentoring opportunities with public and private sector employees. And I would just want to give a big shout out right now to Glenn Morris from the Chamber that was really a champion in helping us get this off the ground. So we go to the next slide. Here's some startling facts, which are really small up there, so I will help you get through some of these. We obviously have not done too many presentations here at the city, so I'm not really sure what font to work with, but Santa Maria is a defined high-poverty area. One in every three youth are living in poverty. For the kids that we're talking about right now, our teenagers, the unemployment rate is close to 30%. We've got 266 kids in Santa Maria on probation, total of over 600 in Santa Barbara County. And we know that if low-income adolescents start work earlier, they're more likely than their peers to complete high school, not to mention the fact that they can earn quite a bit more money as they continue throughout their career. And then having stable employment as a teen improves low-income youth's chances of attending college. So what we were trying to do is target some kids that, quite frankly, probably wouldn't be out looking for jobs to start with. What we're doing is, we're targeting high-school-age freshmen, sophomores, and juniors who are economically disadvantaged but are able to work for the summer. And we went out and found these kids already. If you look into the next thing, it says the application is no later than April 18th, which I think just passed. But we've had our school districts out there and also partners like the CAC and Boys and Girls Club identifying kids for us. The problem was not in finding the kids that were willing to work. We've got plenty of kids out there that want to work, it was finding them a job. And just want to let folks know, too, that we just didn't take anybody that came along. They actually had to go through an interview process, and there is a training program. You know, I guess I'm getting to that age now where I look at kids and say, wow, these kids don't know how to work. But, you know, we do have a little bit of training that needs to go on about how to conduct yourself in the workplace and things like that. So if you can go to the next slide. The requirements for the kids, that they had to be a high school student with the ability to work, have the right to work, they had to have a minimum GPA of 2.0, be able to get to and from a job, and no more than one criminal offense. So once selected, which we're going through the interview processes right now, they'll have to produce a social security card, a schoolwork permit, and a photo ID. Next slide, please. So how this works is, and why I'm here today, is we want to get the word out into our private sector and also to the city here, that how this program works. So what would happen is, we're looking for private industry to pony up $3,400, and what that $3,400 is, that's the complete investment that you would have for the summer. The student would work about 300 hours, get paid about, would be paid 10 bucks an hour. We'll cover all the workers' compensation, the insurance, the payroll fees. Kids will go to work starting June 6th and work until school starts. Like I said, there'll be pre-employment training provided to not only the student, but also businesses through the Workforce Development Board. And what that is, is how to deal with young people. You know, some people nowadays think you give a kid a job to do, and then you leave him alone, and we've come to understand that you basically have to go back and check on that individual and make sure that they're not back on their phones. So we'll also, like I said, have mandatory pre-employment training for the kids on June 13th, and the Chamber has already identified 10 to 15 businesses that are interested in this program. The county also, we have six or seven departments that have already raised their hand and said that in their existing budgets, they've identified some money to be able to go to the kids. So the call is out there to anybody that's a local business owner, if you want to help improve our city. There's a bunch of websites and things you can go to, but there's just basic two phone numbers that you have to remember. You can either call Ray McDonald at the Workforce Development Board at 681-4453, or call my office and talk to Yvonne Bealy at 346-8400, and we'll get you to the proper place. There's also another subset to this as well, is if you are, let's say, an interested individual that doesn't own a business but would like to help, you can actually make a tax-deductible donation of $3,400, and we will find you a student and place them in the proper place. One thing I've learned from attending community action meetings, and I've seen Mayor Patino there as well, is that the solution to a lot of the issues that this city faces are complex, and they're not going to be solved by county government or city government or any one person or entity. It's going to take all of us thinking a little bit differently about things. And so this was kind of a new model that we've come up with that ties in the private sector, the public sector, and gives kids an opportunity to do something different for the summer. And what we're really hoping is, and if you can go to the next slide, there it is, in testimonials, is there was a federal program that used to do this, and it's very competitive grant process, and so we haven't been able to secure that this year, and that's why we're going the route that we're going. But there's been some great success stories. The kid there on the right actually ended up, he was working at a law firm and then ended up getting accepted into law school and is a student at UC Davis Law now. So what we're hoping is that kids will get, kids that you really don't anticipate that will get a chance to get into a business environment, will get a chance to go in, work in a business environment, maybe meet a... will get a chance to go in, work in a business environment, maybe meet a new mentor in their life, somebody that puts them under their wing and guides them through the rest of high school. And either you could... You're either kind of developing a new employee or giving somebody, opening their eyes to a whole new world out there. So like I said, this is kind of a pitch to our local businesses, but it's also kind of a pitch to the city that in some of your departments, if they can find $3,400, we'd love to put somebody to work. And I think we've already heard from Parks and Rec... Or Rec and Parks, sorry, that they might be interested. So appreciate the time and hope we can become partners in putting our kids to work.
Steve, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You know, I know here in the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District, they no longer have Work Ed, but do you know if they do in Galita or in Santa Barbara have Work Ed in the high school districts?
I don't know if they have Work Ed, but they are partnering with us on this program. So we've got kind of a mirror image going on down in the...
Yeah, I knew that.
On the south coast. But I don't know how the school districts are handling Work Ed.
Okay. Mr. Boyson?
Steve, this is strictly for businesses, right? This isn't for domestic use? I mean, I'm thinking of someone that needs...
Hey, if you'd like to hire someone to come mow the lawn for $3,400, Jack, we can make it happen.
Well, no, I'm thinking of someone that is, you know, caregiver or something.
No, no, it's to give them kind of a business environment. And, you know, we don't really want to put any parameters on what that business is. We kind of want... And the interesting thing is what's going to... What we envision is, so we've got the kids picked, and we've kind of got... You know, we're starting to hear from business, and hopefully that ramps up. But at some point, what we'd almost like to do is some kind of, almost like a speed dating type thing where the businesses match up with the student. The student figures out which business they would like to work for. Through the interview process, the business kind of latches on to someone that they like, and then hopefully we can marry those two together and get something working well.
Well, those of us who aren't aware of what speed dating is, so...
Sorry about that. Yeah. I kind of went young on you there, but we'll just suffice it to say we're trying to meet the right people together, so... But so appreciate the time.
Any questions from the council?
I have one.
Ms. Waterfield?
I'm curious. You'd mentioned that you have 10 to 15 businesses that have been IDed. You don't have to name them, but what kind of businesses are they?
Everything. I think on the news last night, it was... Is it MYIB?
Yeah, MIYB.
MIYB was there. We have some construction businesses, retail, insurance companies, those types. It's kind of the gamut of everything that you see out there. You know, I think anybody can find something to do to be able to put somebody to work. And for $3,400, you know, you get... Not only do you try to get to help change somebody's life, but you actually get an employee for the whole summer that you're paying 10 bucks an hour. And like I said, you don't have to worry about payroll, you don't have to worry about workers' comp and all those other issues as well. We take care of all of that.
And is there a specific age that they have to be?
16. Well, it's incoming freshmen, sophomores, and juniors.
Okay, and some freshmen are 14-year-olds.
Yeah. Well, they have to be able to have the right to work, so that's one of the things that we have to clear with somebody as they come in.
Ms. Zuniga?
Thank you, Mayor. Supervisor Lavenino, so you said you've already identified and have some kids. How many youth do you have already picked?
Well, they're going through... They're still going through the interview process, so the deadline was yesterday of when they had to get their application in, so we still have to go through all of those. I don't know how many there are. What we're targeting... What we're trying to do is target up to 150 kids this year.
Nice.
So hopefully, we'll get that many businesses. You know, we'll see how it all plays out, but this is our first year of trying to do it on our own instead of relying on the federal grant.
It'd be great to have a report once it's gone to hear how it turns out.
Yeah, I'll either send something back or come back and let you know how it all played out, and hopefully bring some of the kids that went to work.
That'd be great.
That'd be really awesome.
Just the positive ones.
Just the positive ones. All right.
Mr. Orok, did you have any questions?
Well, there's a lot involved in this, and speed dating, it sounds like, definitely with interviews and things like that. And so the Workforce Board is... Are they the sponsor of this, or is it the county that...
No. Actually, the Workforce Development Board and Ray McDonald are actually the drivers behind it. We are... So what they're doing is they've also partnered with another group, a California Community College Foundation. They're the ones actually going to do the payroll and write the checks. And so the Workforce Development Board's the one doing all the behind-the-scenes paperwork and making sure everybody's qualified, making sure that all the... You know, that everybody is able to work and, you know, has all that paperwork taken care of. We're just out there beating the bushes and trying to get businesses involved, so... Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavenino. Well, the city looks forward to working and participating in the program and encourages any businesses in the city of Santa Maria. Mr. Hayden, did you have any comments you wish to make?
Just that the city has been in discussions with Supervisor Lavenino and his office, and our Recreation and Parks Department is stepping up to the plate to participate in this program. We are talking to other departments to participate as well, too, and we would encourage the viewing public, that own businesses, to step up and help employ some of the youth in our community.
Thank you. Next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will conduct a public hearing to receive comments and consider block grants advisory committee's recommendation for the allocation of fiscal year 2016-17 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program Funds, and adopt three resolutions approving the allocations.
Thank you. I believe the city attorney, Mr. Trujillo, would like to make a comment regarding potential conflicts of interest before we begin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, City Council members. There are two situations that arise under the FPPC rules governing your actions tonight. One is when you serve as a paid employee of one of these organizations that is a recipient tonight. In that case, the FPPC rules are fairly clear that you have a financial conflict of interest because that organization is a source of income to you. The second situation that commonly arises is when you serve an organization, a nonprofit organization, in an unpaid capacity or as a volunteer on a board of directors or any other capacity. In that situation, the FPPC rules are clear that you do not have a financial conflict of interest. You can participate in the decision, but my recommendation is that you identify which organizations you serve and what capacity you serve those organizations, that you can remain unbiased through the deliberations tonight, and finally, that you do not have a financial conflict of interest or they are not a source of income to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Trujillo, and I guess I'll go first and indicate that I currently serve as a non-paid board member for Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. My service on Fighting Back Board will not influence my decision tonight, and I can remain impartial and unbiased during these deliberations, and I do not have a financial conflict of interest on the agenda item, and I'm participating in order to establish a quorum. Because as you will see, if we didn't all have this disclosure, there would be one person up here making the decision, and we don't want him to do that. So anyway. Ms. Zuniga?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. I serve as a non-paid board of director for Community Action Commission, Santa Maria Valley Youth and Family Center, and Good Samaritan Services. My service as a board of director will not influence my decision tonight. I can remain impartial and unbiased. I also, in an abundance of transparency, would also like to share that I am a team member of the Sexual Assault Response Team through my employment with the District Attorney's Office. My affiliation as a team member will not influence my decision tonight, and I can remain impartial and unbiased.
Ms. Waterfield?
I currently serve as a non-paid board member for the Salvation Army. My service on the Salvation Army Board will not influence my decision tonight. I can remain impartial and unbiased, and I do not have a financial conflict of interest on the agenda item, and I am participating in order to establish a quorum which will allow the council to act on this item.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Boyson?
I will be recusing myself when we get to the program portion of this. I will participate in the capital and the home allocations as the organization that I work for, Good Samaritan Shelter, is not included on those, but when we do come to the service allocations, I will be recusing myself. But for capital allocations, I would just like to make sure with Mr. Trujillo that I am not conflicted. Buena Vista Park, which is located adjacent to the Good Samaritan Shelter campus, is on the agenda for capital tonight, and I just want to make sure I don't have any conflict of interest in being that close proximity.
Thank you, Councilman Boyson. No, you do not. We had a chance to look at that issue this afternoon, and you clearly can participate in that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, since Mr. Boyson has a financial conflict of interest on the public services portion of this agenda item, I'd like to discuss the home and capital program allocations first, then followed by the public services. That way, Mr. Boyson will be able to participate on the first two items. And at this point, I'd really like to thank every single member of the council, and Bob is always there. He just may not be on the board, but he's always there when we're doing things in the community. And he was there at Serve Santa Maria last Saturday. So with that, a staff report this evening will be made by Community Programs Manager, Ms. Nades, and congratulations on your recent promotion.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jose Hernandez from Public Works. He is here with us tonight in case anyone needs Spanish translation. ¿Alguien aquí necesita traducción en español? Okay. Well, if not, then Mr. Hernandez can go ahead and call it a night. Thank you. Okay, well, the item before you this evening is our annual public hearing, and that is to consider a recommendation of the Block Grants Advisory Committee to the allocation of federal community block grants. Before I begin with the staff report, our committee chairperson, Rosalie Marquez, and some of our committee members are in the audience tonight, and at this time, I would love for them to please stand to be recognized. They are all volunteers who spend countless hours reading over every single application and attending site visits and then making the tough decisions during deliberation night. It's a demanding process and one that they do with a lot of great pride and high ethical standards. Also with us tonight is Alicia Vela, our Count Clerk-Aide, who actually was hired six years ago by the city through the Summer Youth Employment Program. So she's still with us today. She has been instrumental in the administration of our CDBG and home funds. And also, a shout-out to recently-retired Community Programs Manager, Celeste Quello-Hudson, who is here on an interim basis to assist us in closing out some projects. So big thanks to her, and a thanks to all of our agencies here tonight. The committee's mission is the same as the city's, and as you can see on our slide, it's to provide the highest quality of service in the most efficient, cost-effective, and courteous manner possible. We believe in teamwork, we believe in providing excellent service to the public, and we strive to treat all people with dignity, respect, and fairness. The CDBG program was created back in 1974, and we became a participant the first year of funding in 1975. CDBG is unique in that it is probably one of the only federal grant programs that allow us local discretion as to how we use our funds to best meet the needs of the community, provided that the city activities comply with federal regulations and meet one of the three national objectives, in particular, primary benefit to low and moderate-income persons. Over the years, the city has used CDBG funds for a variety of projects and programs. Most recently, for example, Oakley Park, we've also used the money for ADA work, construction, rehabilitation of nonprofit facilities, residential rehab, economic development, and affordable housing. Now, the home program is also administered by HUD. It is a federal program that funds a variety of activities aimed at providing affordable housing for low and moderate-income households. Now, this is going to be an interesting year because in 1617, it will be our first year that the city will not be participating in the home consortium. That is a consortium that we were a part of, Santa Barbara County. The city plans to apply to the state for home funds, and this is a competitive process that will require preparation and submission of an application for funding sometime this July. Over the years, the city has used home funds for first-time homebuyer assistance, new housing construction, and for the last six years, we've also been able to offer our tenant-based rental assistance program, which provides up to half of the rental deposit to qualifying households. According to HUD, as you can see on our estimated available funding, we will be receiving over $1.3 million, which is slightly more than last year's allocation. Of this amount, 20% can be used for general administration. 15% is the maximum we can use for public services, which is a little over $200,000, and the remaining 65%, or approximately $869,000, will be available for capital. In addition, we were able to add an extra $80,000 from some reprogramming of fiscal year 1213 funding that was not executed. And for your information, a recap of this estimate was also attached to your packet as Attachment A. Concerning the home funds, as recently stated, the city plans on applying for state home funds, and we don't know exactly what that allocation will be if we do get the funds. As part of the CDBG process, we conducted a community needs meeting on October 12, 2015. Previous to that meeting, we had a joint study session with City Council and the Block Grants Advisory Committee, which took place on September 10. At that time, it was agreed that the priorities, as you can see on the screen, will remain the same for 1617 as they were for our five-year consolidated plan. In addition, it was reiterated that one of the City Council's 1416 citywide goals is to shift more CDBG capital funding into fundamental city facilities and infrastructure. Council also reiterated this as an important priority at their March 10, 2016 goal-setting workshop for 1618. We received a total of 28 eligible applications, which is actually a dramatic drop compared to 48 last year. The 28 applications, as you can see, are divvied up in the following way: one for home, seven for CDBG capital, and 20 for CDBG public service. As part of the process, the committee broke up into teams of five and conducted site visits and in-depth reviews of each proposal. Each team shared its report to the entire committee at a special meeting held on February 22nd and then formulated its recommendations for tonight's City Council approval. Those recommendations are enclosed in your packet as Attachment F. Staff suggests that the public comment and council discussion be done for each category of the funding, starting with home and CDBG capital, and then followed with the CDBG public services. As stated earlier, the city plans on applying for home funds through the state. We received one application from the Housing Trust Fund for its workforce homebuyer program, which received positive support from the Block Grants Advisory Committee. If awarded, those funds will be used towards the proposed program. This concludes my portion for the home portion of the presentation. If there are any questions, I can move on to capital.
Any questions from the council? Okay.
Thank you. Concerning CDBG capital projects, the committee recommends that we fund five out of the six applicants. The bulk of the capital funding was recommended for allocation to a city project to renovate Buena Vista Park. A smaller allocation was recommended for Campfire, which is also located at Buena Vista Park. Community Action Partnership of San Luis Obispo County was recommended for funding to continue providing residential rehabilitation services throughout the city, as were two new applicants, MIYB Spaces and Women's Economic Ventures, which fall under a subcategory of economic development. Expanding economic opportunities in the city is number four in our priorities. Also, we are asking for $15,000 in TBRA administration, since currently we do not receive administrative money to administer that program. And this concludes the report for CDBG capital, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Any questions? None? Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence regarding the home program funds or the capital projects?
I do not have any for the home funds, but I do for the capital projects.
Okay.
The City Clerk's office has received four written communications via email from Judith Del Porto, an early childhood studies coordinator at Allen Hancock College, Ken Miles, the executive director of Campfire Central Coast of California, Donna Reiner, and Maria Sanchez, a program manager for the Buena Vista Head Start Program, who all expressed concerns about the Buena Vista Park design plans and encouraged city representatives and staff to work with the Buena Vista beautifiers to receive their input and the input from the surrounding neighborhoods or the neighborhood to ensure the design plans meet the needs of the community and to ensure the historical aspects of the park are retained. Copies of these emails were provided to you at the dais this evening. Copies of these emails were provided to you at the dice this evening.
Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing regarding the recommended home funds and capital projects allocations. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak in favor or in opposition of the home funds recommendations? I will take those first.
I do not have any comments for home funds.
Okay. Do you have any requests to speak in favor or opposition of the capital projects?
I do. I have 10.
10. I will take those. Okay, favor first. Favor. Okay, I have Leah Gonzalez, followed by Kenneth Wolfe.
Three minutes. Good evening, Madam Mayor Patino, and members of the council. My name is Leah Gonzalez, and I'm the Training Program Manager for Women's Economic Ventures, or WEVE. This is my colleague, Guillermo Chavez, who runs our Santa Maria office. This year, WEVE celebrates 25 years of providing local economic development to help small businesses start, survive, and create jobs. WEVE is seeking a $25,000 CDBG grant to support our WEVE en Español self-employment training program. The program helps entrepreneurs test the feasibility of their idea and write a business plan in order to successfully start, formalize, or grow a small business. Our target audience is low-income, Spanish-speaking, Latino entrepreneurs, and we are currently the only organization in the county dedicated to providing affordable, comprehensive business training to this specific population. CDBG funding will help WEVE provide and continue to leverage other support for this program. Our programs have proven their significance over time. Almost half of our pre-business clients started business within 18 months of completing our program, and over 90% of existing businesses remain in business 18 months after receiving services. In addition, 70% of WEVE clients in poverty at intake have moved out of poverty, and unemployment among clients has dropped by 70%. WEVE is committed to helping Santa Maria residents create and retain jobs through entrepreneurship. We have been providing services in the community since 1997, and in the last year have been able to invest in dedicated office space within the M.I.Y.B. Spaces, a full-time staff member, and are developing an advisory committee, which currently has 10 members. We'd like to build on this momentum, and are really excited about the opportunity to partner with the City of Santa Maria to do so. I want to take the opportunity to thank the committee and the city staff for recommending CDBG funding for WEVE, and hope the council will approve our $25,000 request. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Mueller. All right, so Kenneth Wolfe, followed by Kenneth Wolfe, and then Mark Mueller.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Kenneth Wolfe, and I've been a member of the Buena Vista Beautifiers since the conception of the project. I'm here to support the project and ask for your support as well for the upgrade of Buena Vista Park. Buena Vista Park is a positive resource for the community and your constituents. It has some great neighbors: the Santa Maria Inn, Santa Maria High School, CET, Good Sam, Fair Park, Head Start, and the Campfire Cabin. Buena Vista Beautifiers has been working with, and will continue to work with, all city departments to see the improvements that we feel is in the best interest of the city and the people who live there. A final note is that one of the projects we had involved the students from Santa Maria High School, did a survey at a project we had at the park of the neighbors in the immediate area. The survey was done both in Spanish and English, and the results of that was submitted to the Parks and Rec Commission. I look forward to working in your support for this valuable community project. Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Mueller, followed by Virginia Perry Souza, followed by Hazel Davalos.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Mark Mueller, Assistant Superintendent, Santa Maria Benita School District. Before I go on, let me just commend the city. Working so closely with the school district, Mr. Posada has always gone above and beyond and his whole staff, helping our kids out, and of course, Chief Martin. We are a lot safer right now, and the whole community feels it, and our kids feel it. So, thank you very much. But I'm here in capacity tonight as Buena Vista Beautifiers. I'm a member of the Buena Vista Beautifiers. Many of the members of this group have used that park for years. And I really encourage the city to... You'll hear some recommendations that they're going to have on how that park should be renovated, redesigned. So I encourage the city to listen closely to the people of the Buena Vista Beautifiers. Me personally, I'd like to see another basketball court. You know, I don't know how well quickly I can get up and down there anymore, but we're going from four to three. And we got together and made a plan, and I was hoping for a full court there. And also, I need more picnic tables. But you'll see many recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Virginia Perry Souza, followed by Hazel Davalos, followed by Kirsten Kahoon.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council Persons and City Manager. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of Buena Vista Beautifiers Committee. We have been meeting monthly since November 2013 with the mission to assist City Parks Department in enhancing and maintaining the Buena Vista, or beautiful view qualities of the park while honoring the historical features of the park. You have been given a copy of the active member list in this committee, and it can also be found on Facebook at buenavistasm@facebook.com. Buena Vista Beautifiers has 471 friends. Tonight, you will likely be approving over $750,000 in CGBG funds, taxpayer dollars, to demolish historic Buena Vista Park and, in effect, start over. Let me be clear from the beginning: Buena Vista Beautifiers has never advocated for this approach to Buena Vista Park improvement. The CDBG process, which you ultimately are fiduciaries for, states more than once that, quote, "cost efficiencies," end quote, and, quote, "high level of cooperation and coordination with community resources," end quote, is mandated. Buena Vista Park project under that scrutiny would receive a D minus. If you feel you must spend $750,000 taxpayer dollars in order to improve Buena Vista Park, we ask the following: that our qualified youth specialists sit with your architect to amend his design, and we ask for final approvals of this design. Mark Mueller, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Heather Ware, Esquire, and neighbor of 40 years to Buena Vista Park, Judith Del Porto from Early Childhood Learning Center at Hancock, and Jeannie Sparks from the Green Team are the four that we feel would be most well-qualified and did sit in on a session of our own to put our surveys to work. Buena Vista Beautifiers has asked for a seat at that table with the architect three times publicly, to no avail. Before Buena Vista Beautifiers was formed, Buena Vista Park was abandoned and neglected. This brochure from Chamber of Commerce in 2013 does not name Buena Vista Park under landmarks. It's not named. And even in a map which shows all the parks of Santa Maria, Buena Vista Park was not on the map. Now, I just leave it to you to ponder that. A park by the people, for the people, in Santa Maria, in the most historic park in town, is what Buena Vista Beautifiers is requesting. Buena Vista Beautifiers has made a difference in that park. So if you feel you must approve this project tonight, then Buena Vista Beautifiers requests important input and approvals. Your actions tonight will speak volumes about how the City Council values meaningful community involvement.
Thank you. Hazel Davalos, followed by Kirsten Kahoon.
Good evening, Council. My name is Hazel Davalos. I'm the Organizing Director with CAWS, a local community organization that advocates for economic and social justice. We are one of the founding members of the Buena Vista Beautifiers. And as far as my personal contributions to the project, I've walked the neighborhood to get input from 30 houses in the perimeter of the park, and have also invited high school students to participate in park cleanups. During my time on the committee, I have been so impressed with Virginia Souza's ability to engage a wide variety of stakeholders to give input on their vision for Buena Vista Park. We've had in-depth discussions regarding pedestrian and bike safety in the surrounding neighborhood, and public transportation access to the park. We even toured a preschool facility at Allen Hancock College and talked with educators in order to see how we could incorporate learning into the park equipment. We've worked closely with the Good Samaritan Shelter to discuss strategies on how to simultaneously support the homeless population and the park's quality, rather than pointing fingers or laying blame. We've had representatives from the Santa Maria Inn and the Chamber of Commerce participate in meetings, because this park is right around the corner from one of our city's tourist attractions, and should be something we're proud of. Finally, we've engaged Santa Maria High School, as so many students walk across or spend time at this park after school. This all goes to make the point that the Buena Vista Beautifiers Committee has worked tirelessly to get community input on how to make Buena Vista Park the best it can be. And to disregard that input would be unthinkable, and frankly disrespectful, to all of those who have volunteered their time to participate in this project. It is a rare treat when you get this sort of public interest and support for a city project. So I ask the City Council to show Santa Maria that you appreciate and encourage community input by voting to approve this project with the condition that the Buena Vista Beautifiers Committee gets final approval on the design. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirsten Kahoon, followed by Ann Crimarosa, followed by Justin Hitchcock.
Good evening. I'm Kirsten Kahoon, the Director of Shelter Operations for Good Samaritan Shelter. I'm here on behalf of my clients tonight, several of whom who wanted to come and speak and thank you for your interest in Buena Vista Park. There is nothing better than when I leave for work in the evenings and seeing our homeless families playing ball out in the park with the kids. They are beyond excited that this park is going to be revitalized and redone, and giving them more opportunities to enjoy it. They're already planning future birthday parties out there, and wanted to even start their own soccer league within the shelter. So we wanted to thank you so much for your support of this project and putting so much effort into Buena Vista Park. We have a little project at the shelter called Get Moving Good Sam, where our clients, after dinner, actually utilize the park to walk the park and get some kind of activity going after dinner, so that they're not all inside. So this park is very well utilized in the area, and we really, really appreciate all of your support in this project.
Thank you. Ann Crimarosa, followed by Justin Hitchcock, followed by Jeannie Sparks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff, and everybody else. It's my pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of future nascent and existing entrepreneurs. Yay, entrepreneurs. You know, I really appreciate the fact that the City Council has made economic development one of the four priorities for the next couple of years. And I appreciate the fact that the Advisory Council for the CDBG grant funds recognizes the importance of thinking outside the box, and not only focusing on those who have been receiving funds in the past. So, thank you very much. You know, the Santa Maria Business Development Center really provides citywide services for anybody who's interested in starting a business. And we're providing services that are typically provided by the municipality, typically things that are provided by the city itself. And fortunately, or unfortunately, however which way you want to look at it, those things haven't been provided, but, you know, now they are. And Santa Maria Business Development Center is going to be that place where I think our city can be really proud of resources being available for people who want to start a business and stay in Santa Maria. That's the goal, is to help to build the entrepreneurial ecosystem here and make for strong economic vitality within our own community. And starting with those small businesses, they're the ones that actually hire employees. You know, they put people to work. The Business Development Center is an offshoot of M.I.Y.B. Spaces, which has been in existence for two years now. And it's been funded 100%, you know, with private funds, personal funds, My Pocket Funds. And as a nonprofit, it's really time that the community steps in and supports this project. After all, this project serves the community. And, you know, it literally has outgrown my wallet. It's actually outgrown our space. We're moving to a larger space, so that we can really have room to serve the needs of the community. Numerous studies have been done that show the direct correlation between the services that are offered in a facility such as the Santa Maria Business Development Center and reductions in poverty, increase in employment, and decrease in crime. So we're going to be partners, the chief and I. We're going to work together to help people go to work, so that they're not out, you know, borrowing someone else's money. Illegally, that is. So, this center is poised to really serve our area, our economically and other disadvantaged community members, giving them a hand up and a hand towards self-sufficiency. And I'm telling you, I truly believe that everyone has the right to self-sufficiency. And so, they just need the tools. As a community, we just need to come together and do that. We applied for $150,000. The advisory team decided graciously suggested $25,000 as a beginning. I'm hoping that, as you find other little tidbits, that you will keep the Business Development Center in mind, and that we work together and make a great place in support of our community.
Thank you, Ms. Crimarosa. Justin Hitchcock, followed by Jeannie Sparks, followed by Ken Huff.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm here representing Grid Alternatives. My name is Justin Hitchcock, and I'm the Regional Director. We had applied for CDBG funds this year. We were unfortunately the only applicant in capital funds that was denied. We, as an organization, help low-income families gain access to the benefits of solar energy and the savings involved. And at the same time, we offer job training for people interested in getting, starting their career in the solar industry. So, we have been working and starting to build momentum in Santa Maria. Recently, we were given state funding to focus some of our efforts here in Santa Maria through a statewide low-income solar program. And so, for that reason, we did apply for the funds, hoping we could ramp up the amount of work we do here. In a recent project that we just finished, we helped out a woman and her family. Her name is Maria Contreras. And she, through us installing solar on her home, is saving about $400 a month, and that equates to, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of savings over the lifetime of the solar system. So those savings are helping her and her family, you know, save for her student, her family's education, you know, paying other bills, things like that, that are hard to do when you're low-income. At the same time as this installation, we trained 15 students from CET Santa Maria and gave them hands-on skills on that same installation, using tools and techniques, installing solar and gaining hands-on training that they would need to then go on and have the experience to find a job in the solar industry, which is booming, as you can see in the city. Solar's going up everywhere. And on top of that, of course, it's clean renewable energy that is helping the city reduce its carbon footprint. So that's the type of project that we aim to do. While we're not able to concentrate as much effort without the help of CDBG, we do still want to keep a presence here. One thing we do ask is certainly that we are considered next year, and if there's any additional funds that become available, that we are considered. And lastly, something that doesn't require any funds is we would request support to help our outreach, to get the word out about this program. The solar industry, we're the only nonprofit. However, there are many for-profit solar companies. And in order to distinguish ourselves, to make it known to these low-income families that we are different, and we're there to help them, not to make a profit, we need the city's help. And many cities have helped us send out letters that are co-branded by the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hitchcock. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Jeannie Sparks, followed by Ken Huff.
Hello, I'm Jeannie Sparks. I'm with the Buena Vista Beautifiers, and also SB Can and SB Can's Green Team. And just to... I didn't come here to speak on Justin's project, but I have talked to him before, and it's a good project. And if you could find some funding for them to even do partially, it would be a nice thing. But I'm here to talk about Buena Vista Park, and to ask... But I'm here to talk about Buena Vista Park and to ask that you respect and honor the role that Buena Vista Beautifiers has played in bringing about this desire for change at the park. Virginia brought us together two and a half years ago. And I'm told that the reason why the city is now looking at doing the improvements is because the beautifiers started looking at improving the park and doing projects there. And we've been doing projects for two and a half years that got the people to reclaim their park, make it a family park for the people who live around there and nearby. I'm only one mile away from there and I do like going to the park there. And then a lot of people in our committee have historically gone there over the years. We've been working with members of the City Landmark Committee, as well as all the different stakeholders, some of which you've just heard from. And we've surveyed many of the committee members. We have 166 surveys that we've done altogether. So we're integrally involved in this. And so what we'd like to ask is that you give, when you give the approval, if you do, we're not really happy with the design because the design now is to tear out everything that was there, not honoring our history. As so often happens in Santa Maria, we tear out the mall and we, I mean, we tear out historic buildings and we put up a mall, and then the mall doesn't do very well. And then we do it again on the other side of the road, and it just keeps happening. Why can't we retain a few things? Because especially the design that the city is proposing right now doesn't add any new amenities that are not already currently there. The design just kind of shifts them around. And they could be shifted, we could leave what's there and enhance it. Don't take out that bell-shaped curve of a sidewalk because it's very useful and it's in good shape and people use it. The new design, people may not use it, they may cut across, and then you get things worn out. So we're asking you to, if you do approve the funding for this, and we know that there's a lot of pressure to do that, that Buena Vista, that you require the Recreation and Parks Department to not only work with Buena Vista Beautifiers, but that BVB gets to sign off on it in the end. Because right now, Parks Department has been trying to work with us, but we're not happy. So it's just, it's got to be beyond working with us. We really have to have an authoritative role that says we get to approve that final design. Otherwise, it's not, we can't support it. And we'd really ask you to do that. There's a lot more I could say. I know I'm about to run out of time, but we'd really like to have the historic value there with new innovations that parks across the country are doing. Let's look into some really exciting things that are multi-generational, that enhance family, bring people together, and let's make it something that the entire community can support.
Thank you, Jeannie. Ken Huff.
Thank you, Mayor, Council Members. I'm Ken Huff, representing Santa Barbara County Action Network. For 14 years, we've been a countywide grassroots organization pushing for sustainable communities. And a big part of a sustainable community and protecting open space is our parks. And that's why, two and a half years ago, I started coming to the Buena Vista Beautifiers meetings. Two years ago, on May 9th, I had an op-ed published in the Santa Maria Times, "Inter-City Park Really Needs Your Help." And in there, I talked about the historical significance of Buena Vista Park, which has a lot to do with the formation of the city because that was where the water was to come from. And that was back in '05. Two years ago, this coming Saturday, Buena Vista Beautifiers held a spring party to reach out to neighbors, and 50 kids and 30 adults attended, and they were surveyed. And most of them lived nearby, many of them rode their bikes there. We surveyed them about what they would like to see, and they wanted a bigger playground. They wanted more play areas, soccer fields, better security, a baby changing station, more lights, and more trees, and swings, benches, and picnic tables, and a tot lot. Now, we look at the plan that we've seen lately, and there's no picnic tables. Right now, there are a lot of picnic tables. The new plan currently has none, I think, and I think the whole group thinks we need to have picnic tables. Maybe they shouldn't be all congregated the way they are now, but spread out where a family could feel comfortable to come and have a little picnic. And Jeannie mentioned the bell-shaped sidewalk. It doesn't quite cut diagonally across the park, but it almost doesn't. People walk on it. With the new plan, people are going to cut right across the grass and we're going to wind up seeing an X, a dirt trail, and an X across that park. Another thing of historical significance is the rock with the monument, and that faces towards downtown, towards City Hall. And I think the plan says to move that and put all the historical stuff in one corner by a campfire. And I think it'd be better to have, retain the monument where it is, facing towards the downtown. In conclusion, I've got to agree with what Virginia said and Jeannie said and Hazel said, that we urge you to direct the staff to seek the BVB, the Buena Vista Beautifiers final, or sign off on the final plan before it goes to construction. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huff. I'd like to close the public hearing regarding the home funds and capital projects and bring this back to the council for a discussion or a motion. Ms. Water, oh, Ms. Waterfield.
I just have a question.
Yes.
And this is my second time as, sitting here as a City Council person, understanding all of the requirements. So this is for staff. Item number three, the Community Action Partnership of Slow County, is that going out of the city of, are those funds leaving the city of Santa Maria? What, can you explain what that, that's all about?
Certainly. All of our CDBG funds have to be used for Santa Maria residents. And they have to stay within the city limits. So no, none of these funds go out of Santa Maria. CAPSLOW, they provide a service of, they actually will come in and rehab a home, a qualifying home, and they've done roughly, depending on the amount they spend per home, the last few years, it's been between 12 to 18 homes. So actual homeowners, even renters, as long as the landlord's okay with it, if there are ramps that need to be installed because of ADA access or any code violations, we've actually worked really closely with code compliance to, and, and community development to assist those homeowners who can't maybe pay for certain repairs. CAPSLOW will come in and actually provide those services at no charge to the homeowner or the renter.
We don't have a contractor or a company in Santa Maria that does this? It has to?
The city used to do a residential rehab, but since CAPSLOW's been receiving funding, grant funding, we've been able to allocate those funds to them. And they've actually been able to do a much better job than...
Okay, because I'm looking at this, and so it says Slow County, San Luis Obispo County. So I'm just assuming that it's a company in San Luis Obispo County coming in and doing this work?
Right, no, no, no. They're based out of San Luis Obispo County, but they serve both San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara County. And our CDBG funds are only used for work they do in Santa Maria.
Okay, okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Mr. Boyson?
Madam Mayor, I wonder if, is Mr. Passata hiding back there? He certainly is. Mr. Passata, I wonder if we could ask you to comment on some of the comments that we've received today from the Buena Vista Beautifiers and their supporters, specifically on the, their input on the park design and their suggestion that they have final authoritative approval over the park design.
Thank you, Council Member Boyson, Mayor, and the City Council Members. Thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about Buena Vista Park. Just a little bit of history, I don't know how much time it'll take, but you know, just to give you a little bit of background. For historic perspective, in the 1990s, Buena Vista Park went through a major renovation. And a lot of the things that you see out there today were actually installed in the 1990 renovation. That was also a CDBG-funded project, and it was in desperate need of being updated. For many of you that have been around for a while, remember there was an old building over at the intersection of, what is that? Morrison and, is that Thornburg? It's that street that runs down in front of the fair park there. There was an old dilapidated building and an old dilapidated restroom that were there. Those were all removed. The sidewalks were replaced, the bell shape that was mentioned was part of that project. The new basketball courts that were put in in the 90s, you know, were all part of that project. What's happened over time, oh, let me just back up one more step. So when we started working on renovations throughout the city, and we've done several of them throughout the system, Buena Vista Park came back on the radar about, excuse me, about eight years ago, from a staff perspective, and we started looking at opportunities to do a renovation project there. The park has always been a hangout, for lack of a better term, for the high school students from whatever generation or timeframe that you have. The park has always been there. When I first came to Santa Maria in 1979, my job was to lock up the parks at night, and that was one of my places to have to go and lock up those restrooms. So my history with the park goes way back and with the area around it. The community has changed a lot since that park was originally built, and even from the 1990s when we did the renovation. Some of the steps that we took over time, not to argue the point with the speakers, but the department took a lot of community input. We started working on the project, like I say, several years ago. The beautifiers came into the picture in their organization, and actually it was Mrs. White O'Neil who actually brought the project to us and reminded us that we needed to get a new playground installed. So we started looking at that. The beautifiers were organized, and they started with, you know, giving their community input. We had a staff member attend several of the meetings with the organization to kind of see where they wanted to go. And in the design phases that we got, we did take input from them. I believe Mr. Huff mentioned things like safety. We wanted to look at safety. We wanted to look at lighting. We wanted to look at providing a playfield area that would give some broad areas to, for people to run around in and do activities. So with that charge, I actually met with the city manager and we talked a little bit about what we needed to do there. And the city manager organized a meeting of departments to come in and talk, police, fire, public works, engineering were there, along with record parks, to talk about what was happening at Buena Vista Park, what were the issues facing the park from a, from a public safety standpoint, from a design standpoint, from accessibility issues. And so we took input from all the departments at that time. We also brought in our consulting landscape architect who held a public meeting out at the park. Beautifiers attended that, people from the neighborhood attended that. And we basically do what they do, architects do. They created a list of things and came back with some ideas on what the park would look like. Over the time, we presented several concepts for the park. It came down to looking at a concept that would take the park and really bring it into the 21st century. Right now, a couple of the comments were made, well, you're not going to change the park. I'll have to argue that point and say that, yes, we are significantly going to change the park. It will become a park that's designed for more accessibility. It will be a park that is created to deal with environmental issues. One of the comments that was made in the very beginning of this project with the beautifiers, oh, we should have, you know, more trees, maybe plant a garden, do those kinds of things. We can't do everything in one fell swoop, so what we did design in the park were three areas that are along the western border of the park. They're kind of open space areas. I believe Mr. Huff also mentioned removing picnic tables. We have on several occasions reminded the group that a picnic table is something that we can put almost anywhere in the park, and it's probably best to design the park, lay it all out, get construction done. And those furniture amenities, those can be added at a later date. If we see a group needing 15 or 20 tables for their event, we've left some areas where they can actually bring in their own equipment. A lot of people bring bounce houses into the parks now to use for their birthday parties or special events. So we've created these areas where a family can come in and have some space to do that in, without driving their car on the grass or some of the other things that happen in our other parks. We also looked at a design that would preserve the history of the building of the park. And I believe Mr. Huff mentioned moving the monument. The monument's location was pretty arbitrary at the time in the 90s when that was installed. It was just put in that one location because it was an entry point to the park. The proposal is to dress up the entry point on Morrison and have people enter through a gateway that would enter into the park, with the monument area there, you know, properly displayed and, you know, those kinds of things. I think what is being overlooked, I think, is that the park will be a major focal point for the community. That's been our goal from the beginning. How do we make the park a place where people want to go? City Manager Hayden and I met with a couple of the Buena Vista Beautifiers in a meeting where they talked about the need for the park to be a destination. Guests from the Santa Maria Inn, the meeting was actually at Santa Maria Inn, and we talked about how do we get guests from the inn to go over and use the park, you know, and understand that it's there? How does that become not only a tool for the neighbor, a site for the neighborhood to recreate, but also for the community that's coming to visit us? How do we get the tourists to go over there and use the park? What kind of elements do we do? We had several concerns about, oh, the basketball courts are too close to the public playground, so there's a lot of adults at the basketball courts, you know, hanging out, so the playground are then probably 20 or 25 feet, so maybe we could move that. So we did that in the design. We actually took the basketball courts and split them up into individual locations so that you didn't have this massive group of people at any one location in the park. It also provides us with the opportunity to add a few features. I believe at the meeting that Mr. Hayden and I had at the inn, one of the questions, one of the statements was, well, gee, you know, the kids like to play tetherball. So we took that input and we took it back to our architect and we said, hey, let's, how can we design those in? So there's tetherball courts located in the design now. So again, I think we've gone to an extreme measure to take the input from the community that we received. I think that we also, our responsibility as the Recreation and Parks Department is to provide meaningful projects that are not going to last just for today, but take us out into the future. If you look around the community, we're just wrapping up Oakley Park. That's a $1,200,000 project that is just going to be amazing. And we did exactly what we did with Buena Vista. We brought the community in, they told us what they wanted to see there, and basically that's what they're getting, within the confines of our resources and how the design fits into the community. Lastly, I just would like to say that there is no perfect park site, and there's no perfect park improvement that you can do. And as much as the chief and I would like to think that we're going to create this real safe environment, it's a public park and we can just try to make it as safe as we can, and that's, has been the goal the whole time. I guess in conclusion, I would just like to say that the Recreation and Parks Commission has reviewed the project. They are, they've approved the conceptual design. The architectural firm and the city engineering department has already begun work on the project. So the design is already in the mode. And lastly, ordinance, Santa Maria Municipal Code relegates the responsibility for the orderly development of city parks to the Recreation and Parks Commission. To take that from the commission and delegate it to another group would be in contrast to the ordinance that we work under. So I'd be happy to answer questions you might have about the project.
Any other questions of Mr. Passata?
Thank you, Mr. Passata.
Thank you, Mr. Passata.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Sunniga?
Are we moving to discussion, Mayor?
Pardon?
Are we moving to discussion?
We are, in discussion, yeah.
So, I mean, I just, I first of all want to say that I did receive a call from Sister Janet, who left me a message, who said she agrees with everything Virginia Sousa says. And then, of course, I did also receive a voice message from Jeannie Sparks, who was encouraging that we provide the Buena Vista Beautifiers with final approval on the design in the park. Having said that, I will say that I was at the first probably half dozen meetings that the park beautifiers, Buena Vista Park beautifiers had, when my schedule was allowing, and haven't been able to attend meetings since then, but have been on the email list and for, you know, two and a half years have been receiving the emails. And they are a very active committee, meeting consistently, providing input consistently. And when they talk about their community outreach events, I will say that I was at their first one. And it's more than just an event where they're, they're trying to get input from the community. They're passing out plants, and they have food, and they have activities and stuff. So there's a lot more going on at those events in addition to just asking people for questions about what they would like to see in the park. And obviously, this is disappointing. You know, we love it when the community gets involved and that we have a community that cares and wants to provide input and that, you know, we haven't been able, with all of the meetings that, you know, the city's had with you and you've come to for the city, that we haven't been able to find a happy medium that everybody's happy at. That's, that's really disappointing. I would, I would encourage the Recreation Department that they continue to meet with the beautifiers and maybe, you know, agree to two or three more meetings with the architect and staff to see if we can hash out something that at least meets in the halfway. I have to say, I could not support anything that would direct that the beautifiers, as much as I care... much as I care about you guys having final approval on the park, I just don't see how we can abdicate that kind of authority to a community group and set that kind of standard. So I would definitely hope that we could encourage that staff meet with them two or three more times with our architect and with the representatives, you know, maybe that they mentioned, and see if we can hash out something that, you know, is at least a compromise.
Mr. O'Rourke, you had your light on.
Yeah, I'll speak to the park situation first. I absolutely agree that I think taking the final authority away from Recreation and Parks Commission is not appropriate in this, in this or any other case, I'll just say. And I think the suggestion of a few more meetings, you know, that park is used in a number of ways, and I can't remember exactly because it's been a number of years. I've got it stashed at home, but the survey for the Recreation and Parks Commission about things that people wanted in the parks and so forth and so on, and picnicking was one because there are a lot of our population like to be outside and doing this and that. Well, you put a soccer field in the middle of Buena Vista Park, it ain't going to happen. You're going to have soccer balls all over because the park just doesn't have the size. But I'll guarantee you, people will be playing soccer there. And I think Alex hit the nail on the head that putting in the hardware in a permanent position really doesn't show you a lot when you've got people that bring bounce houses. We may put up another Ramada, I'll say, because families come just like they do at other parks where we have Ramadas. And so that kind of coordination to use the park, and I understand the neighborhood wants to use it, but we're trying to bring other people, and I'll guarantee you, people are going to all around different parks and holding functions. So, and again, I'll just say that over the last number of years, we've taken these capital funds, which have helped some nonprofits such as Jack's nonprofit, in huge amounts of ways with money and capital for their development and projects. And we're one of the communities that don't spend 100% of our capital funds on our own infrastructure, which is the charge for us. So this council, the city, has done that for a lot of years, and I think very well. This isn't chump change. This is, this is pig dollars, and that park needs, in my mind, some serious renovation when you're talking about, you know, keeping the camp fireplace there and the amount of money that it's going to take, which we evidently may be putting in tonight toward the renovation so that can meet all the requirements of sewer and water and those things that it hasn't done for years. You know, we, the city's got to take the stand on this, I'll say. And the Recreation and Parks professionals, I understand that the beautifiers have great ideas, and I think they can be brought into this, but the final analysis is it's $700 and some thousand dollars that we've dedicated for the renovation of that now, which could, I don't want to say could, or would have gone someplace else, but it's time to, you know what, or get off the pot, quite frankly. This, you know, has been worked on, and, you know, we'll be dead and buried by the time, you know, we're trying to come up with everybody's input and a final approval of it. So I'm just, that's one thing I just want to say about that particular instance. And I'm going to certainly move forward to make this park a place that we really like and can be used to the best advantage of everybody in the community, so.
Did you have another comment, Mr. Boyson?
I do, if I may.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and I would echo comments from my fellow council members. And I think that, you know, there are, as Mr. Posada said, we are building some flexibility into the, into the design of the park. And I think there are, as I look at the lists that we've been given here, I think there are things certainly that we can talk about, you know, some sort of a bulletin board, doggy bags, you know, no smoking in the park. I think this is something that's going to come before us on all parks in the city here in the not-too-distant future. I, you know, as far as the, you know, lighting in the park being a number-one concern, certainly I think that, you know, I think that if you meet with Mr. Posada and the architects, and I think you'll find that most of those concerns have been addressed. But, and I just have to say, you know, we really can't, as a city, delegate final authority on something like this to a, you know, a community group that has not been designated as a Brown Act Commission like our Recreation and Parks Commission has been. And I do believe that that's where we have to trust their judgment as far as weighing in on design of the park that stays within budget parameters, that fit the needs of the community, and also has the efficiencies that are required for the maintenance of the city of Santa Maria. I noticed that one of the suggestions on this was to have restrooms open for 24 hours. Do we have any parks in the city where restrooms are open 24 hours, Mr. Posada?
No, they're all automated, locked at about 8:00 p.m.
8:00 p.m., yeah, that's what I thought. I really don't think that there would be any reason to change, to change this one. So I'm very much in support. I'm very happy to see that the Buena Vista beautifiers are supporting the allocation of funding for this at this time. You know, Virginia, I can just tell you, even though this has been on the radar screen of the Parks and Recreation Department for the last eight years, you have definitely hastened the, you know, the priority on this renovation and by probably at least a year or two. So, you know, kudos to you for bringing this and putting it to the forefront on our priorities. I'm certainly excited about it, and like Ms. Cahoon said, there's 250 people that are living right next door that are, that are very, very excited with the renovations that are going to take place, so.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
I won't belabor what everybody else has said and have gone before me, and I do agree with my fellow council member colleagues in regards to not giving the authority away from the parks and recs. What you have done, the Buena Vista Parks Group, you've done a tremendous, great service to the city of Santa Maria, and I want to thank you so very much for pushing this to the forefront in such a quick manner. And it will get done, it will get done in a very nice, structured way. I'm not sure exactly how many more meetings need to be conducted, but I am hoping that Mr. Posada and everyone else with Buena Vista can come together and be happy with a 90% portion of what is going on there. And I think it's a great idea to incorporate the Santa Maria Inn and for their guests to have some kind of knowledge that there is a beautiful park right behind them, and they do have another place to come and visit to the city of Santa Maria. So I just want to thank you for all your hard work on this project.
Okay. Have a motion?
With that, Madam Mayor, I would move for the adoption of resolution. I guess, can we do these at once?
The two.
Both resolutions?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-38 and resolution 2016-39.
I'll second. Let's move in second to adopt resolution 2016-38 and 2016-39. Any further discussion? Karen, oh, Mr. O'Rourke.
Before we vote on, I'd just like to make a couple of comments in relationship to agencies. And Etta brought up a question about the agency that seems to be working out of San Luis that have done a lot of good things for us. In reviewing the whole package, I'm talking the whole package, one of the first, first things that I like to do is to look at the board of the agencies that are applying for money. And I'm just, this is overall, I didn't want to lose it on this particular, these two items. It's darn important, I feel, that we have people, local people, that are helping make the decisions and don't have an interest when they're applying for funds, I'll say. And in a couple of these cases, it seems to me that the work, and Steve Lavigna brought them up, the Workforce Development Board, or the Workforce Board, it seems to me is the driving factor from the feds and to the county that have overlooked Santa Maria for funding economic development. And from there, a few of the organizations that are applying for capital funding then are in the, I'll say, the workforce building mode. And it seems to me, and I know both of you didn't get a lot of money, but the personal expectation is, in those cases, that should be your first, or else we've got another fund rather than taking our capital CDGB, which we just discussed about the park and other things that other nonprofits need, such as the Boys and Girls Club, a kitchen or something of that nature. So, and then I also look at salaries, and I have to say that in a couple of instances, it seems that all the funds are going to is salary. And I don't know, of course, that's education and those kinds of things, but it just, sometimes I have to say that, you know, our people that do the reviewing of all the agencies have that charge to make sure that the money is spent economically and that we're not funding someone's occupation, so.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, and Madam Kirk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Thank you, Mrs. Nades. Moving on with the Public Services Activities portion of the agenda, Mr. Boyson, you're going to recuse yourself?
I will be recusing myself due to financial conflict.
He's going out to have a beer in the hallway.
Ms. Nades, you can continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to all the agencies that are still here. It's nine o'clock. Okay, we're going to go through this, and it'll be, it'll be painless, I promise. For Public Services, as you can see from our lovely pie chart up there, the committee focused on those programs that prevent homelessness, address basic human necessities and critical emergency needs, prevent crime, and help at-risk youth. All 20 public service applicants are being recommended for funding. As you can see from the chart, the bulk of our funding is proposed to go towards Priority 1A, which is homeless and critical needs, followed by the second-largest chunk, which is actually 1C, at-risk youth, 1B, special needs elderly, and small section, 2C, education, literacy training. So we've broken it down a little further so you can actually see who got what and how much. Priority 1A covers food, shelter, clothing, homelessness, critical needs, necessities of life, and crime victims. Nine agencies are recommended for funding totaling over $112,000. Priority 1B addresses the special needs populations such as the elderly, the frail, or those who may be mentally, developmentally, and physically disabled. Five agencies are recommended for funding totaling over $37,000. And Priority 1C addresses activities for at-risk youth. Five agencies are recommended for funding totaling over $45,000. And Priority 2C provides educational opportunities and literacy training. One agency is recommended for funding and represents about 2% of the overall funding and amounts to $5,000. This concludes this Public Services report, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Waterfield?
This is a learning process, so please bear with me. Councilmember O'Rourke brought something up in regards to funding salaries. And so last year, when we had this process, I was under the impression that salaries was not a component of applying for funds. So as I look at the 20, the 20 lists that are here...
Ms. Waterfield, could you turn on your mic?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
As I look at the 20, the list of 20, there are six organizations that have requested funds that do not go to salaries at all. The rest do. So I'm trying to understand why, you know, what's going on, and if this is a normal process. If it's not a normal process, just explain it to me, please.
Of course, definitely.
I am so confused.
Actually, we did double-check with a couple of agencies that we had, we were wondering about, because they, they had asked for more money, and then they were receiving a little bit less than what they asked. And so actually, seven out of the 20 agencies will be using the money for direct assistance.
Okay.
Solely for direct assistance. Now, that doesn't mean that the other 13 aren't using some of the funds for direct assistance, but they are using some of it for salaries. The reason, and really roughly, that's about 60% of those, of the money is being used for salaries. And that's because some of the agencies, funding for salary is needed to pay for the employees who actually execute the programs and services. Sometimes the agencies receive funding from other sources that will actually cover the costs of, let's say, counseling or medicine or equipment, but it doesn't pay for the actual salary for the person to be able to execute the service. So sometimes they need a little bit of that salary to be able to actually provide the service needed to the community.
Okay, because in my mind, I was thinking, God, that's a lot of money that could go and feed a whole lot of people or house a whole lot of people in that instance. And then I started looking at the annual income, and there was one association that had a $4.1 million annual income, and so I'm thinking, well, you know, $20,000 is nothing, is not even a drop in the bucket. So I guess they can't find that within their organization. Is that something that is looked at too, to?
Yes, because the, let's say, for example, the $4 million, that's for the overall agency, but that doesn't mean that the actual program...
Okay.
...that they are providing to Santa Maria receives that money. Sometimes they only receive, you know, 5% of that.
Okay, that's what I needed to know, all that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. Mr. O'Rourke?
Yeah, I guess, as a lot of us have seen and heard today in public comment and those kinds of things, it seems, and this is just off the wall because I'm going to make a recommendation, I think, later, because all that's been happening with the One Action Group, the recurring theme is that we've got to do something for young people. And our priorities, although we just completed our priorities as a city council, it seems that we may want to, and I'll just suggest that we do have a joint meeting with the, with the committee to reevaluate maybe where we're going next year in this process. And I'm throwing that out now because I'm going to suggest that we do it because they're, the youth are kind of on the back burner, and it seems that we're saying a lot of the problems we're having in town has derived because of our lack of support for youth programs. So I just, I want to throw those, those two tidbits out now before the end. And I, you know, I had, I'm looking all over because I had written some notes down again about salaries and some of those things, and there were a couple of, there were a couple of agencies that had some pretty sharp increases in salaries, total salaries from last year to this year, and I wasn't going to identify them. But I, that's another recommendation, I think, that should go out to our, our committee members, and I think they'd look at that pretty seriously anyway, but that might be an area that the council reiterates that, you know, the most efficient and effective use of the taxpayers' dollars is really paramount. So I'm sorry I lost my, my notes.
Well, you might, you might find it before we finish.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to piggyback on that because I think that's really important. Then when you read the, I can't remember the, the organization, Pharmaceuticals? Then when you read the, I can't remember the organization, Pharmaceuticals, when they do so much with so little, and they may have just one person working there, and I can understand the salary for that group, but there are some that are larger groups that I would probably question. But that's something we can talk about later, and, you know, talk about maybe criteria that we're interested in putting on there. Ms. Zuniga?
If I could just, since we're in discussion, I guess I could just offer a couple of insights. So as somebody who worked in the nonprofit field, to Councilmember Waterfield's concern is that, so if we look at, let's look at Community Action Commission, who has a huge budget, but what we have to acknowledge is that they run Head Start programs. So they have something like 12 or 15 Head Start programs in our community that are all funded out of federal dollars from the government. So that makes their budget look like they have this huge budget. Yet they run programs like the Los Comadres Program, the Las Compadres Program, you know, this program, the Senior Nutrition Program. So they run a lot of programs that are small, base programs, providing direct services that they don't get funding for. So this money, while it seems, in comparison to a $14 million budget, doesn't look like much, but we have to acknowledge that budget's going to do one service, Head Start throughout our community, which is offering, right? Preschool education to families who wouldn't be able to afford it otherwise. So I think that helps, you know, I hope...
It does, and they weren't one of the organizations that I was referring about.
Yeah, and I'm just using as an example, because I'm familiar with them, because I'm on their board. And then in terms of staffing, you know, and the dollars for staffing, as somebody who came, you know, out of the nonprofit world, I mean, traditionally nonprofits don't staff, don't make a lot of money. But as we have agencies like CADA, or, you know, Good Samaritan Shelters, where they have staff who are going to training and always honing their skills, and getting better educated, and providing more comprehensive services, it's important that we help them keep that staff, because what happens is, they get staff trained to work with teams around drug and alcohol issues, or to work with, you know, homeless people, or, you know, domestic violence, to work with domestic violence. And as they get staffed, as their staff gets trained, they become more valuable. And so if they can't compete in keeping their staff, and they lose that staff, and they're constantly in this, like it's a rat on a wheel, or a mouse on a wheel, trying to get staff, get them trained, get them qualified, and then they do that. Sometimes they get licensed jurors, sometimes they get certifications. And if they can't pay their staff, they're gone. And we want to support agencies having really great, qualified people who are trained and who are valuable to be doing those services. So I know it's difficult, because we want to put, you know, food on a plate and all that, but, you know, they're actually helping that to happen, so that's what I would offer to the conversation.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence regarding the public service funds?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. I would like to open up the public hearing regarding the public service funds. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak in favor or opposition of public service funds and recommendations?
Madam Mayor, we have six requests.
Six requests.
Okay.
Those in favor. Okay, Judith Monte, followed by, last name is Powers, followed by Karen? Okay. Kirsten Cahoon?
I'm privileged to get you guys twice tonight.
We are privileged, Ms. Monte.
I want to say thank you to the allocation team and their very dedicated effort, and also to the city for their very strong support for the food bank. We are the number-one city receiving food bank services. 39% of the services the food bank offered countywide came right here to Santa Maria last year. Roughly 57,000 individuals in the city were touched by the effort of the food bank. And it's not just the food bank. We have a network of agencies that work with us, so your funding to the food bank isn't just enabling our organization, but it's Catholic Charities, and it's Good Sam, and it's Salvation Army, and so many other food distribution programs. Your funding is going to go directly to food, no salaries, although I wouldn't mind. One of the programs we've just initiated this year in Santa Maria, I do want to take a minute for your time, is we're partnering with Dignity Health. We have a focus on people with diabetes who are insecure for food, recognizing that they have a unique need for diet, and we've got a collaboration going with them, where they identify people, we get them the right foods, they're getting some nutritional and some health training. So that's a really exciting collaboration that's going on this year. And then if you saw this last week's Santa Maria sun, and we heard from it this evening, we're still only at 72% of our rainfall, even with all the rain we've gotten. Fifth-year drought, we're D4 classification, which is extreme drought, with vegetation and tree impact. This is impacting the food bank and the cost of the food we do purchase. So your support really is making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you. Karen Powers, followed by Kirsten Cahoon, followed by Sandy Delos.
Madam Mayor, City Council, and the wonderful advisory committee, I want to thank you very much for your time and the efforts of the advisory committee. And I want to say, you guys have been super supportive of the Rape Crisis Center. I'm the Finance Human Resource Director of the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, but more importantly, I think I'm also an advocate. I go out with survivors of sexual assault and child abuse, on accommodations to law enforcement interviews, sit through the medical forensic exams, and also do crisis intervention on the hotline. So I have direct access, frontline access, to survivors in the city of Santa Maria. And when you talk about serving youth, we go into every single public school in the city of Santa Maria and talk to the kids about good touch, bad touch, get away, or stay away, say no, get away, tell someone, sorry, a little nervous. And so we are directed at youth. We also go in and talk to the kids in teen court, we're involved in that. We have collaborations with most of the agencies that have applied for CDBG funding, and we also go into the juvenile hall. I think we're in there certainly once a week, and then on crisis calls as well, because human trafficking is a huge problem in the city of Santa Maria. And it has been, we have been getting clients, like exponentially, four and five girls a week, and I'm not exaggerating, runaways, youth, Santa Maria, this place is a hub. So we're here, we're working with law enforcement, we're working with probation, we're working with juvenile hall, and we're there for these girls and boys. So we are focusing on youth. And I'd like to thank Councilwoman Zuniga for pointing out the staffing and the salaries, because all of our services are free. So we don't spend any money, or we don't collect any money, sorry. Most of our money does go to administration and staffing, because it's us that's providing the programs, you know? Our ladies go out into the schools, and we have very few program materials. We raise money from foundations, but that's why all the money goes to youth staffing, you know? We try to train our people and keep good people, and if we don't pay them, like she said, they leave, you know? They'll go find jobs elsewhere. So thank you very much for your support, and please don't take any money away.
Thank you, Ms. Powers, and thank you for what you do.
Hello again. I just wanted to thank again Mayor Patino, the city council, the city of Santa Maria staff, and our amazing allocation committee over there that puts in so many countless volunteer hours to make these allocations. I know how tough it is with all of the amazing nonprofits we have in this community. So on behalf of Good Samaritan, thank you so much for continuing to support our efforts. And as the Director of the Emergency Shelters, I promise to continue to give 110% in trying to help solve some of the homeless issues that we have in our community, and most importantly to me, to stop the cycle of homelessness within our homeless families that we're continuing to see in our community. And I think that you hear from everyone that comes up here to talk that we collaborate with each other. We have all worked together with all of these agencies. So it's amazing to see us all together and to hear how we can all continue to work together, and I thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Sandy Delos, followed by David Quayle, followed by Sylvia Graham.
Madam Mayor, excuse me. Honorable city council members, my name is Sandy Delos, and I am Senior Staff for Domestic Violence Solutions of Santa Barbara County. I'm here to give a very simple thank you for a very complicated process. CDBG is no cakewalk, and we want to extend our fullest thank you to everyone who was involved, but particularly to the citizens who give so freely of their time and have to act with almost Solomon-like wisdom in parcelling out these monies to so many deserving organizations. We want you to know that we do not take one single penny of our allocation for granted, not one single penny. I would be very happy to discuss with any of you how that money is spent. Please give us a call if you have any questions. We had 157 survivors in Santa Maria Shelter last year. Over 60% of them were children, most of those were between ages zero and five. We had another 1,500, it was 1,575, crisis and information calls, which come in constantly. That was just for Santa Maria. Those were all handled by the client advocates, who are my absolute heroes. And yes, part of our allocation goes for their salary, and they are not paid enough. So once again, thank you all for your service. Thank you for contributing to the health and welfare of our beloved central coast, and thank you for helping victims of domestic violence once again this year.
Thank you. David Quayle, followed by Sylvia Graham.
I want to congratulate you, Rosie, for your appointment to the programs manager here at the city. That's a great move, and I appreciate you, whatever process took to do that, you'll be fine with that. I'm sure Celeste's happy with that, too. I want to thank the city council, mayor, allocations committee for sure, for the work you do. And to answer some of the questions about paying for staffing, I'll tell you what, my friends, you cannot do it all with volunteers. And if you're going to accept federal money for rental, and we're talking about $10,000 last year that we spent in rent alone, another $4,000-something in utility bills, largely a lot of that went to Santa Maria in water bills, you've got to have a professional staff to administer it, or you're going to lose that program, and you're not going to do a very good job with it. So it does take money. And these grant monies do not include staffing. So, you know, you're going to lose something if you lose professional people, I'll say that. You're helping grease the skids with some of this money. I'll tell you, the other situation that we've got is, we're committed, and as many other agencies in town are, to reducing food insecurity in this town. And with the drought that we've suffered for the number of years that we have, we're not just dealing with families coming in, but we're talking about repeat visits from these families. And a lot of folks have lost their jobs because of the drought and associated situations, and in some cases, immigration, and that's another issue. But I will have to say that, you know, we have 30-plus volunteers that are committed to our work. Some of them work in our unpaid staff, volunteers operated thrift store. We give out $3,500 to $4,000 per month in clothing to people who need it. There's a small amount of money that comes in to help keep the lights on and the rent paid, but everything else goes out. In addition, we make a high priority toward paying city water bills with the money that we do get. And I just want you to think about that, because it's not cut and dried. I mean, you look at it, and you say, oh, that's staffing, you're paying for staffing, but you're also keeping programs alive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sylvia Graham? This is the one I was trying to remember, Alliance for Pharmaceutical Access.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Mayor Patino, and the rest of the city council members. I am Sylvia Graham. I'm the Program Director for the Alliance for Pharmaceutical Access Program, otherwise known as APA. And I am here to thank the advisory committee for their wonderful recommendation, again, of our nonprofit organization that we have here in Santa Maria. Santa Maria is very unique in the fact that there is this type of agency. We have calls from all over other cities in California, wondering how we can put this program together in their cities, because they don't have a program like ours. What we do is, we specially help individuals that can't afford their medications to get their medications through pharmaceutical companies for free. And all the services that we provide are free of charge for anyone that comes in and needs the service and qualifies from the pharmaceutical companies, because they're the ones that put the guidelines on how an individual will qualify for their medications. Mr. O'Rourke, I've known you for years, and...
Unfortunately.
Our program is all direct service client, and we all, you know, and it's, all the monies that we get from CDBG goes for our wages, and it's just to pay our staff to work with the clients to get their medications. And in Santa Maria, we have other offices now in San Luis Obispo and in Lompoc, but Santa Maria is where we started, so it's our biggest base. Last year, we serviced over 800 individuals, get close to three-quarters of a million dollars in free medication just for the Santa Maria area. So for the amount of money that we get from CDBG funds, too, how much comes back into the community, it says a lot for our organization. But yes, we are all direct service, and that's how we pay our wonderful staff that works with our clients. So with that, again, I want to thank you so much for investing your time and your monies in our service for what we do for the community. You have been assisting and helping us for many, many years. APA was started in 2004, and CDBG, I believe, the first grant that we received was way back in 2006. So we have been helping a lot by the city, a lot of years, to help our community. So thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
Thank you very much, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing regarding the public services funds and bring this item back to the council for a discussion or a motion. Ms. Waterfield?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. You're going to have to walk me through this one. I'd like to make a motion to accept, are we doing the exception of H-I-N-J? Okay. Of resolution 201637, in regards to the Block Grants Advisory Committee of Recommendations for Allocation of the Fiscal Year 201617, and the block grant funds for the public services.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second to accept resolution 2016-37. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, just quickly, because the group is here tonight, two out there, all, some of my appointees and some aren't there.
They waded through the process. Oh, my gosh.
And I think everyone wants to thank you seriously for what you've done, and so I just thank you very much. It is a non-thankful job that you put on for us. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you very much. Ditto, ditto, ditto.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Yes.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. And I would certainly like to thank all of you. I'm sure you didn't think it was going to last this late, but thank you so much for all the work you do. And we don't want to do it, so, you know, so I thank you, I thank you, and that goes for all of us up here, because you do a fantastic job. Just fantastic.
And I just want to say, this was the first opportunity I had to actually attend the deliberations. My schedule hasn't allowed me to do it in the past, and it was just, it was amazing to watch, to see that, you know, to see the process in action. And I would encourage, it's an open session, and I would encourage any of the public who has any questions and would like to see exactly how much work goes into it, and the amount of paperwork that you generate from your site visits, and the information that you share amongst each other. I would encourage people to come out, because it's definitely interesting, and it's an education to us all.
Ms. Nadas, did you have any comments to make?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to again say thank you to the city council, to our agencies, to our committee, and to city staff. And also, just to let you know, we have moved our final allocation approval to the city council annuals action plan from May 3 to May 17. So we have pushed it to the third Tuesday in May. And thank you very much.
And good job to you.
Thank you.
First time out, good job.
Thank you.
First time down, good job.
Our next item is another public hearing item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will conduct a public hearing to hear protests against the abatement of public nuisances such as noxious and dangerous foods, rubbish, refuse, and dirt. And if no majority protest exists, authorize the Director of Public Works to perform abatement of the nuisances from public and from public and unimproved private properties, private lots.
Okay, staff report is made by the Director of Public Works, but I don't see him here. So Mr. Olds, are you, okay, you're on.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. This is the 2016 Weed Abatement Program Public Hearing. The Public Works Department has surveyed undeveloped lots in the city to determine which lots are in need of weed and rubbish removal. Staff has sent abatement letters to owners of the lots that are out of compliance per Resolution 2016-24. If Resolution 2016-40 is approved, staff will perform abatement of the weeds and rubbish on any lots that are still out of compliance. It is typical for 10 to 20 lots to be abated in any given year. And this concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I like your staff report. Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
I'd like to open this up to a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak in favor or opposition of this item?
We have no requests to speak.
Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing, bring this back to the Council for discussion or a motion.
Move for approval of Resolution Number 2016-40.
So moved in second to approve Resolution 2016-40. Any other discussion? Hearing nun, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
I choke you up all the time.
Next order of business, that was quick, is a business item, a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a resolution approving the city of Santa Maria's disclosure information pertaining to the issuance of refunding revenue bonds by the Central Coast Water Authority and the disclosure procedures of the city.
Staff report is to be made by Director of Administrative Services, Mr. Vizet.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and the public. We're here tonight to refinance the Central Coast Water Authority's bonds from 2006 to obtain lower interest rate and save on debt service payments. And that concludes my staff report.
Great staff report.
I know. That was embedded.
Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written communications?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
I'd like to bring this item back to the Council for discussion or a motion.
Madam Mayor, the only thing that I would like to point out is that the city of Santa Maria actually does not have any obligations or does not participate as far as the debt service on these obligations. We elected to finance our own state water contract obligations and so, but being part of the Central Coast Water Authority, we are required to provide this information for the refinancing. So while we are technically on the hook on this, it's actually the other eight agencies that are participating on this.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, I would move for approval of Resolution Number 2016-41.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved to approve Resolution 2016 dash forty-one, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing nun, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Next item will be a report by the City Manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Members of the City Council, your next City Council meeting will be two weeks from this evening on May 3rd. We have, it is proclamation and presentation night. We have seven proclamations or presentations we'll be giving out that evening. Remember, the month of May is always the very first meeting when we have a lot of proclamations that we present, Rodeo Days, the Police Officer Memorial, Water Awareness Month. So we have a number of proclamations and presentations to make before the City Council. A couple of consent agenda items, a couple of no-stopping zones will be coming forward for Council's consideration, along with the Notice of Contract Completion for the Paul Nelson Aquatic Center. We'll also be having two public hearings. The first one will be a reading, first reading for the Presker and North Broadway Commercial Development Center. The other one will be a first reading for the subdivision in Luffy. So that will be coming forward for Council's consideration on May 3rd. Couple other things I'd like to bring to the Council's attention and also the viewing public's attention. The City Hall has been receiving a rash of phone calls from residents throughout the city regarding a business going through town. And they do this during the springtime every year, and they're curbside painters. And they go and they paint the curb addresses of residents, they leave a flyer on the doorstep, and then they use intimidation tactics in order to get paid on a voluntary basis. Make no bone about it, they're not city employees, they're not affiliated with the city, it's a for-private business. They do not have a business license, nor do they have an encroachment permit. So if anybody from the public sees them out there, we would ask that they kindly call City Hall and notify us, and we would be sending out either a code enforcement officer or a police officer to verify that they have an established business going on in the city. If it's after hours, we would ask that they please contact our police dispatch, and we'll dispatch an officer accordingly on that one. There is a provision in the Minnesota Code, Chapter 4 dash seventeen point one, talks specifically about curb address painting. And it's unlawful to conduct that activity within the city unless you have the consent of the property owner. And it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to paint on any street or curb or sidewalk any address or sign which identifies the address of a property without the prior written consent of the owner or the occupant of the property which would identify such property or address." So I just want the viewing public to know, they should not be conducting that type of business without their approval.
We haven't had them coming through town in a long time, have we?
It's been about two years.
So must be their, they must be, their time to recycle through.
The other thing is the One Community Action Meeting, just a reminder for the viewing public, it's going to be for next Wednesday, April the 27th, at the Menami Center, starting at 6:30. And we'd like to thank the entire City Council, I saw everybody from the City Council on Serve Santa Maria, out there beautifying the city and working on various projects within the city. And then I did make note tonight of the residents that came forward regarding the Responsible Pet Owners Ordinance. And if that is something the Council would like us to consider, bring back at a later date. That concludes my report.
Okay, now, the next item is oral reports of Council members. Mr. Boyson, might we start with you?
Sure. Mr. Hayden, I would certainly support considering an ordinance for the, what is it, Responsible Pet Owner, RPO, right? Responsible Pet Owners. So I, that you have one vote here to have a public hearing for that, for that such an ordinance. And other than that, I have no required reporting.
Mr. O'Rourke?
Well, I just, I guess, a tacit Californian nod, how's that, direction, rather, I don't know whether we're taking a vote tonight on that, other than giving direction, how's that sound?
We can't, we can't take a vote, but that gives you, gives them direction.
I'll give you direction, yes.
Ms. Waterfield?
Um, whoa. I'll give you my assignments, I didn't forget them this time. April 6th, attended the Strawberry Industry Dinner. April 7th, I met with Edwin Weaver of Fighting Back Santa Maria. I never had an opportunity to really sit down and meet with the gentleman, and he was just really great to talk to. He's doing a good job over at Fighting Back. April 13th, I read to the children in the morning and afternoon at Los Adobe School. April 13th, later on that day, I attended the annual Advisory Committee meeting of the ROP-CTE High School Course Validation at Pioneer High School. And that is, that is an organization that probably should get with Steve Lavenino because they do a lot of great training with these, with these kids. April 15th, four hours I'll never get back, I'm sorry, League of Cities Dinner in Atascadero. April 16th, I gave the opening welcome to the National Association of Women in Construction, a great group of very strong women doing wonderful things for the community and their region. And April 16th, I participated and served Santa Maria and planted flowers at Presker Park.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Strawberry Recognition Dinner. I also was a judge for the Orket Lions Regional Speech Contest. They had four high school young women there who had been up three or four levels, this was about the fourth level, who competed, and the topic was justice and liberty and justice for all. And they just did an awesome job. At this level, they make, they earn, if they win, they earn $4,500, and then they continue to go up. At the end, they've accumulated, I think, something like $15,000 by the time they make themselves, they get themselves up to the top. So they were just, they put us all to shame, they put us all to shame. And then I attended the Roosevelt Hammer Dinner in Santa Barbara, and Joanne Marmalaho was one of the people who were recognized for her years of service to families living and working in Santa Barbara County, so that was really touching. I attended, I went to Mrs. Zelke's third grade class at Battle School, they were studying government and did a presentation on government. So I got the picture from all the council signed tonight, and they're going to be thrilled to get that. I attended Serve Santa Maria, which is their 11th event, which is really exciting. We had 15 or 16 projects that included schools, parks, and homes, and already working on our August project. So people didn't get a chance to participate in this one and want to come out and help us, our next project will be in August. I attended the Friday Farmer's Market, I don't think that's actually the name, but in my head, it's the Friday's. Downtown, yeah. That event was awesome. We showed up at 5 o'clock and it was already busy, and by the time we left at 7:30, we were fighting our way out of the crowd. And I understand that it went till 9 o'clock, even though it was only supposed to go to 9:00, so I'm excited. That was just a great job and a great collaboration between city staff and all the departments that worked on that and the community members who helped support that. So I can only see that thing getting bigger and bigger. I think we've outgrown the space already and are going to have to figure out, maybe cutting off Main Street and Cook and spilling out in the street would be really exciting. So can't wait for it to continue to grow. And then I would also support the ordinance coming back for the non-mandatory Responsible Pet Ordinance, Pet Ownership Ordinance as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. April 6th, I spoke at the Retired Teachers Event, and they had me speak about Santa Maria and what was going on. That evening, I attended the Strawberry Industry Recognition Dinner. On April 8th, I did sports talk with Rick Blaymeyer and Steve Lavenino, Larry was gone. So the whole world knew that some animal had eaten all of Larry Lavenino's fish, but he was gone on vacation, so he didn't, he found out when he came back. Later that day, I did, went to the Wisdom Center for their groundbreaking, and it was just great. And they put up a tent and everything, but, and it was raining, it was just, it was just a perfect day. April 9th, I attended the Special Olympics at Harry Wood Area Athletics Competition at Pioneer High School. April 11th, I went to the Board of Supervisors Meeting to speak on the budget item for North County Jail and how we needed to keep the current North County Jail open and not close it until the new one is built. April 12th, I spoke at Safety in Our City at the Santa Maria Association of Realtors Meeting. April 13th, I went out and Rick Hayden and our fire chief, he's not here, we sold newspapers, On the Hope Benefit Newspapers. And that noon, I attended Santa Maria Valley Beautiful Meeting. And the afternoon, I met, we met with Darren Halstein of the Church of Jesus Christ, and he had told us about the serve that we just saw, just serve, yeah, and that they would like to be doing more in the city of Santa Maria. And April 15th, I would have much rather been at Downtown Friday Night than where I was. And April 16th, we did Serve Santa Maria out at Presker Park. It was absolutely a beautiful day to be doing that. And today, met with Pete Flores on our One Community Action Discussions, and the meeting will be coming up next week. And met with Laura Capps on the Santa Barbara County's Food Action Plan. And I want to announce also that Friday night, from 5 to 8, will be another Downtown Fridays in Santa Maria. Maybe we need to find another name that sort of rolls off the tongue easier, I don't, anyway. So I guess that's it. Anything else from the Council? Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.